See it's on. It works. Is it not a, like sometimes it takes a minute for it to get enough charge and it's dead, dead?
It was working at home and then when I pulled the plug.
It went off right away? Uh-uh. No wonder it's just so bad there won't even. Got a charger.
Yeah. I don't know. Is it a good plug in?
Uh, I can try a different one this time.
It says it's on.
Sometimes they have a little light that shows like when it's charging but I don't know about when. Oh, here's something right here.
Yeah, that says it's on.
So maybe it's just taking a second to get a little charge or something.
Well, I have one of these. But I don't have any. Well, let's see. I might not. I think I read it all, so I should know. Yeah, it's not gonna work. Okay. It's not like more than ever. It's just like a record. For some reason, you know, in my PC, the drop down menus don't stay dropped there. I can't scroll down and just.
Yeah. And me, I just heard today. I'm gonna find out tomorrow for sure.
Cause I just don't think that we need the minutes.
Is that one down here at the church still doing anything? You've never seen anything down here?
Um, yeah, they do. They, they, they are still doing something, but they wanted to do something. I said, don't be too patient. Too skeptical for me. I don't do that. I, I get too much.
Yeah, that's happened, yeah.
If you're not gonna go do all the things, you should be doing. Maybe, yeah, cause that just curious me anyway.
Just why not, like, yeah, why not?
Well, the thing is, when you're getting a little more skin disease and all the rest of that, I mean, DSDA's been at our foot a couple of years. But, yeah, but.
That's funny.
Is that one of the tray? There's a kind of, you know, they all seem to have some trays. Is that one still doing that? So kind of, I think it's a church or two down.
Yeah, but they don't need it. May if you want some tray.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Yeah. They better not sit next to it. There you go. I brought, I have her. And she's gonna sit next to Zee.
Stay by Zee.
Yeah. Cause she's.
'Tis the season.
Still not doing anything?
No, but she's just.
Oh, I need her to sit.
It's getting warm, so it's good.
Well, that's not good.
Yeah. Must have been power to it, though.
And whatnot. So I'm just about ready to have to send my wife away on the metro newer to us because our other one had a catastrophe.
That won't break.
I know. I know. I know. So instead, they tried to put a pallet, two pallets in the back of the van and hook the windows.
So is it your box truck? Is that the one that's broken? The box truck?
The reefer truck. It runs, but the, it, it's the lift that broke.
Uh, yeah, you told me that.
And we've got five pallets to pick up tomorrow. Whereas we have to go clear up to all of these.
Is it something major? Like, is it just the hydraulics or what?
Oh, and it's way more than that.
Tracks of worth there, good.
Yeah. So we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a nice, you know, fifty-five hundred truck.
Uh, first get a little bit out of there.
Well, I told him, I said, he's not gonna get me. My, oh, I might as well just go to another food place. And try and see whether we write it off. I was like, I'd want a dime out of it, please.
Yeah. Well, even without, if you don't have the list, I mean, it's off truck. Yeah. Maybe the lights don't want to bite. They have a pretty crappy truck.
They've got a truck to put their furniture in. A reefer truck to store their furniture.
Oh, yeah.
The thing is, is the bottom of the, the bottom of the deck to get into a truck is this tall.
Yeah, it's not like you get lift stuff up in your.
No.
Yeah, we have to start here. Huh? Okay, everybody ready? Going to call to order the October twenty-second Tenino City Council work session. All members are present. I just wanna say thank you for coming. Real quick, our first hour is a work session where we're gonna go over our budget. We'll go into our regular session at seven thirty where there'll be public comments. So if you haven't signed up, there's a sheet over there. If you'd like to speak, we'll go off of that sheet. So make sure you sign up on there if you wanna to speak during the public, uh, public session. So, uh, work session. The first one on the agenda is just to review our agenda for tonight. If there's any changes or anything you'd like to make note of, we can do that when we start our regular meeting. We have a lot on there tonight, so we've got quite a few things, so. Nothing on the agenda? Uh, okay, next is the vacant city property surplus. We kinda discussed this before. The city has several lots that are not being used. We had discussed surplusing sometime. There were some comments. I think Linda happened to be gone the night we talked about it. So we put it back on here just for discussion. One of the things we talked about was putting those up for surplus since they're not being used. And, uh, so I just wanted to have a discussion to see if that's really what the council wants to do before we start preparing any, you know, any paperwork to do that. So does anybody have comments on the properties or be the ones over on, Linda, I always forget that.
Green Street.
Green Street. There's three lots over there, uh, that, uh, the ones we're talking about. We also have the property for the, we're talking about with the library building and also that, but those are kinda be, gonna be kinda separate. We'll work on those separately. So we're primarily talking about the Green Street properties right now. There's, I believe, three lots there that are, that we could surplus if you guys, if that's the direction you wanna go.
There's also Brock Williams and Seth Lindgren. I don't know if they've contacted you yet.
Uh, we'll have to deal with that one a little bit later. It's a little more complicated. It's right away versus just a lot.
He's been, yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna take some, I don't know exactly how.
We're in behind Brock's house there?
There's a right away that goes.
On the side of it.
On the side of his house. It's, uh, I don't think there's any use for that right away, but I think it's gonna take something with our planning commission to vacate that. So I did talk to him and.
Okay.
We'll work on that one, too. But. So any thoughts on, uh, do we wanna move forward with, uh, with surplusing those properties?
It just really bothers me to, to get rid of assets that the, that the city owns, especially right now, you know. I'm not for it.
Yeah. Okay. I understand. I understand. I know the same way. It's just, uh, we had talked about it. So how about anybody else's?
It's just the one property.
There's three properties over there.
There's three properties.
There's three separate pieces over there that are.
They had other properties.
Yeah, we've already surplus Washington Street.
Yeah.
We did that some time ago. So that one's already done. Uh, so that, those other properties, those are the three vacant properties we have, basically. So, uh, yes.
I would like to.
Everybody else wanna move forward or you just want us to bring a resolution and?
Well, like, I share Linda's concern. You know, it's a small city and if the city needs property down the road, it's gonna be so hard to obtain it. Um, on the other hand, I, I understand that we need the money. So I'm, I'm, and building them with two minds.
I don't think it needs to be done tonight.
No, it doesn't need to. We're not gonna vote on it tonight. I'm just getting, I wanna make sure before we go through all the paperwork and get it all together that.
Yeah.
I mean, so I can, we can bring them back and there can be, you know, more discussion there, but.
What's it gonna cost for an appraisal?
We've already, I think we've got them all appraised, right? We have them all appraised and everything already. So it's all, they're ready to be done. It's just a matter of, uh, whether we wanna move forward or not. So. So I'll bring, if you want to, I'll bring back a resolution for it and we can.
Before we go that far, let's, cause I don't remember seeing, uh, the appraisals on any of it.
Okay.
And if it would benefit the city to sell them or not.
Okay.
You know, just because we can doesn't mean we always should.
Right. I agree.
They were on a few council meetings ago, but.
I forget, I forget what they were to at this point, but we could.
One was a hundred and fifty.
That was the property sitter.
One was a hundred and forty-five, it seems like. And they were all around there. Yeah.
I'll, uh, we'll send out the appraisals the next meeting and we can, I guess I'll give you a little more information.
Yeah, I think that would be a logical next step.
Okay. I was just wanting to make sure that wasn't, everybody was saying, no, we don't wanna do it before we put much more effort into it.
Well, we're not saying that we don't wanna do it. It's just, it's like that one last step.
Can you just describe where Green Street is?
You know where, do you know where you turn left to go to Bukota?
It's right on the other side.
Right there on the right.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, the main thing here is our budget workshop. I just wanted to share with you, we've kind of got a first draft of where we're at, where we are at in our budget and proposal for twenty twenty-five. We all, we handed out a packet for you. If you look at the first page, this is where we start with our revenues. What we did is presented a five-year budget comparison. A lot of these, what we really used is kind of looking at what we actually got in twenty twenty-four to put forward what we're gonna, what we expect to get for twenty twenty-five. I would say we can go over detail, but I'd say overall, we're looking at a flat to maybe a slight increase in overall budget. We can do a one percent increase when we do our levy lid increase and then on top of that would be any new construction. So we tried to be a little bit conservative because we don't wanna get in the spot we've been where we get at the end of the year and our revenues are not, uh, what we expected them to be. So we tried to be a bit conservative on the revenue side, just to be safe, I will say. You can see on taxes, it's a couple hundred thousand dollar increase. Some of the others, like licenses and permits are a little bit lower. So some of these are lower, some of them are a little bit higher. But overall, if you look at the bottom one, look at the bottom line, the total revenues, uh, we were expecting about, uh, one million, uh, I'd say one million eight hundred thousand and we're proposing one million eight hundred seventeen thousand for twenty twenty-five. So pretty flat revenues, uh, if we're being a bit conservative here in what we're gonna get. I'll give you a little minute, minute to look over those. If there's any questions on revenues, I'd be happy to try to answer, uh, any questions on that.
Dave, you wanna explain to the audience what we're actually doing here?
Uh, okay.
We're looking at the numbers, but they're not.
Yeah, sorry about that. We're looking at our budget projections for next year. So by the December, we have to present a budget to the, to us and to the community. It has to be approved. So what we're doing now is just looking at initial numbers on what we expect for revenues and what we expect for expenditures. So we can start getting an idea where, you know, where we're at in the budget overall. And so when we talk about revenues is where really the brass tax hits the, you know, our, our revenues are pretty predictable. Our expenditures are where we, you know, can sometimes get a little squirrely. So we'll, we'll talk about the expenditures next.
Is that, hold on, is it your website?
Uh, not yet. It will be, though.
Yes, it is.
Is it on there now?
It's on tonight's agenda on our website.
Thank you.
Yes, I will say, if you ever have questions, everything we talk about is on our website. If you go to this meeting, there's, uh, it shows all the documents that we're looking at tonight.
Thank you.
Let me know when you're comfortable moving on to expenditures and I will.
So Dave, where in this packet, where, where, what are, you're going on the expenditure, rather than the one, one point eight million dollars? Those are the revenues.
Revenues. I'm sorry. I probably mixed it up. I'm not revenues.
No, I mixed up here. One point eight million and that's what we're expecting for next year.
Right. In our general fund. That's general fund only.
Does that include the, the half million dollars we added to our general fund this year or is that a separate, separate?
This is, uh, yeah, I should explain that. When we started the budget this year, we started with a zero, assuming no starting balances. So it's basically called zero-based budgeting. You start everything at zero. Assume what income, what you're gonna get in revenues and expenditures and base everything off a zero starting, starting point. Because really, literally, we have zero anyway. But, uh, so it's called zero-based budgeting. And so this one point eight million dollars is just what we expect to get in revenue this year. There's no any carryover from last year or anything. So that's just what we expect in revenue in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
As far as revenues, I may be missing it, but I'm not seeing, uh, the new tax I was looking for safety.
Let me, uh.
The safety tax?
That would be, uh, that might be under, uh, police service, um, the revenue for the, the public safety tax?
Yeah, it's on the first page, under sales and use, and it says public safety.
Oh, it does.
Okay.
There it is. Third one down.
Okay, thank you.
I will point out one on here. I just noticed that I had, I had missed, you looked through these numbers a hundred times and you, uh, and you go back through on page three, uh, on, uh, it's three eighty-five, zero, 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 zero. It says special or extraordinary items. I just asked Jen about that. She.
I think I put that there if we surplus.
Oh, surplus stuff, okay.
Oh, that'd be the three hundred.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Special. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, on page three, it said, it says special or extra, extraordinary items. It's three eighty-five, zero, zero, zero. I wasn't sure what that was for because it's a line item that we've never had before. Jen says that's like, would you surplus the property? If we, if we sell the library or the.
Okay.
I think that was money we would expect to maybe get from that.
So it's potential revenue.
Potential, yeah.
So it's not. Jen, we get more than that for the library?
Yeah. I think we did, yeah. I think we just, we can still adjust these. These are not, these are not fixed numbers. This is just a first draft. So if things like that we pick up, we will, we'll adjust to make it better.
Okay.
Everybody got any more questions on, uh, revenues? Let me know when you wanna move on.
I'm ready.
Everybody good? Okay, let's move on to revenues. This is.
We're gonna move on to expenditures.
Expenditures, yeah. I don't know. I've got my mind on the revenues now, yeah. So. So revenue-wise, uh, I wanna start out by saying this revenue projection right here is, there's a couple things that are not included in it yet. So when we look at these numbers, there's a cou, uh, things we need to add. The first one and the biggest one is gonna be the loan we took to balance, get our budget.
Now, this is expenditures.
Expenditures. Expenditures. The loan we took for this year that we passed last meeting, we're gonna have to pay that back over three years, but we haven't got a schedule for that yet. So that is gonna have to be added to this.
About to five hundred a month.
So that's gonna be a, a kind of a big chunk. The other one that it does not include yet is our liability. Did you, am I right? Did you do the liability?
Interest.
Okay. So, uh, we still need to do some updates, a couple of updates here, but the big one is that, that payment on the loan that we took that we'll have to do for next year that's not included in here. So that will be out of our general fund, uh, just so you're aware there. So we made significant cuts here. I mean, there's some areas that are still a little bit more, but we've made cuts. Legislatively, we're pretty much staying about the same. The big ones are gonna be our insurances, our insurance liability insurances is going up. So that's one of the big in all these areas where we'll, you'll see a pretty big increase. Yeah, let's see.
Looks like the judicial support salaries and wages is up a lot.
Were we up higher on this?
You're moving a person from.
Oh, that's right. We're just gonna split next year. Maria is gonna be half and half. So there's gonna be a reduction in another, on the police on this one.
Okay.
This is kind of the hard part about these. When you start moving people around or do salaries, moving a different place, it's kind of, looks like there's an increase, but it's not really. The, I'm trying to look through these ones that there's a big, big decrease or increase. Decrease in finance, recording and elections of about ten thousand dollars on page six. Most of the other ones are pretty much even with this year. Maintenance and janitorial, uh, we cut quite a bit. We have already expended this year fifty-one thousand. We're cutting that to thirty-eight thousand for next year. Admin's going down a bit. You can see on the side where we zeroed out a bunch of them. You see all the zeros. Those are areas that we zeroed out, from previous, uh, last year, just so you can point those out, so you can point those out.
One of those down there is, that you've zeroed out is internet service. Is it listed someplace else?
Which page are you on?
On page nine.
You're way ahead of us.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're okay.
Yeah, it's coming out of a different place. We were double, we had it in two spots.
Oh, okay.
So it's coming out of the telephone park. But it's gotta, but it's gotta stay in here, just.
It's in there, just again, in another place.
I know, the numbers thing, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so I think there's nothing on page eight. It's different. Page nine, we get into our operations. That is gonna be down about fifty thousand dollars from what we appropriated last year. Law enforcement. I know this is one of concern for everybody. Law enforcement, we have actually, I'll just tell you what we spent this year. We spent five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We appropriated this year for seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Right now, that is funded at seven hundred and eight thousand dollars and that was after cuts recommended by our, our police chief. So those cuts, there was about seventy thousand dollars in, in police, the police budget, but real close to what we rebudgeted for last year. A big difference on this budget is page eleven. That is building services. As you know, we had a person in-house that did our residential, building services and also code enforcement. We now are moving towards a contract for that where all those costs will come directly from, uh, our, with the contract will be directly from our fees for building services. So that's gone from pretty high. We're, this is mostly salaries. We budgeted eighty-seven thousand dollars last year, one thousand one hundred for this year for just some, uh, like postage and some of those other things that we need, attorney's fees. So that was a, that one, one was a big cut we did.
Can we go back to page ten again, please? Law enforcement?
Yep.
Seventy thousand, eight hu, uh, seven, seven hundred and eight thousand. Is that including the seventy-five thousand that is coming in for the new tax?
Well, it's, this is kind of the, one of the weird, weird things about that money because it's included in revenues. There's no way to show that, I mean, we're in expenditures now. So you can't, I mean, it's in the, it's in the budget as far as income.
Yeah.
But it's considered part of this, part of the funding for our law enforcement.
So it's not included in this seven hundred and eight yet?
I don't know how to answer that question because it's just part of our, it's part of our overall budget. I mean, I'm assuming that that's, the part of it is, uh, we have to spend that money on, on, it's law enforcement services, so. Not law enforcement. We can spend it on any emergency services technically, but we, it's for law enforcement.
For Tenino is law enforcement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we can spend it, but yeah.
If you can find out for sure, cause it seems to me that that seventy-five should be in, in a year.
Well, there's no way to, to show it in the expenditures. I mean, where we show it is in the revenues. But I know what you mean. I, I understand what you mean that, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's see. Another kind of a bigger cut is on page twelve, protective inspection services. We went from a budget, appropriated budget in twenty twenty-four of a hundred and nine thousand and that's down to seventy-four thousand. Significant cut there. And again, understand, this is our first draft. That doesn't mean we can't, you know, make further adjustments. But this is just trying to go through and catch the, catch the ones we could.
Are we dropping VCB?
What's that?
VCB. Are we dropping that?
Uh, we, I, we're, yes, I talked to them, uh, some time ago and they knew kind of our budget situation. And she said, we can get by with not having to pay them, but, you know, we can add it back in.
What is it?
VCB.
Oh, VCB. That's, it's EOB now.
EOB, yeah.
Yeah, it's not VCB anymore. That's why I thought it was, that's why I thought it was zeroed out was because it's no longer VCB.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still in our, in our system, shows VCB, yeah. The, uh, so that, I took this five thousand dollars that we paid to them for kind of, they promote us and sometimes, you know, in some events and there's some flyers they put out. But talking to her, she said, we'll get by and just, uh, yeah, just considering our budget situ, situation.
I called you.
Let's see, what else? So the bottom line on our twenty twenty-five proposal, without those, the payback of the loan, we would be plus a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at the end of the year.
You're down here.
Yeah, at the very last page, on page seventeen, if, if our revenues and expenditures are as in here. But we gotta add some more expenditures. So we're gonna have, that's not gonna be a totally accurate number. We're gonna have to add that, the payback of the loan in there.
Yeah.
But we're getting, we're getting. But we're getting, we're getting close. I think we're going to be, have to do some more cutting just because that loan, I think, is going to be more than a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to pay a year, but.
How much do you think?
I'm guessing, it's kind of, kind of depend on our end of the year, where we're at at the end of the year, but I'm guessing at least two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm guessing, you know, because we're going to have to pay it back over three years with interest. Is what our, I bet, that's just off the top of my head, trying to figure out basically what do I take back to, to pay back around seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I think we need to wait for the final before we even discuss that.
Yeah.
What about the other one point three million that needs to get paid back?
That's what he's talking about.
That's, that is it, that's all of it. So we borrowed one point three million, and this is another kind of one that's a little bit hard to explain. Part of that borrowing, because we paid for ag park expenditures out of our general fund, we have the loans, I mean, we have the grants, but we have to pay them upfront and then get paid back. So we're going to, we got some, just got a big chunk back today, or yesterday, we got five hundred thousand dollars from the state. So that really, that one point three million dollars is not going to really be, I think, if we get all this money back from the state through these grants, it's not going to be, we'll be able to pay down that one point three million dollars, I believe, to, to make it a little bit easier.
Okay, so that's eight hundred K, and then we have another five hundred thousand for the.
And that's again, kind of flexible depending on, because that five hundred thousand was looking forward from when we, last meeting, because like, kind of trying to estimate what we need to get through to the end of the year, and then have enough carryover into the next year to pay. The first of the year, we have significant expenses because we pay all our insurance and some of those one-time big upfront fees. So that's what the, that could be variable depending on how much we end, how much we spend at the end of this year, and what it's going to cost us in that first month of January to pay those big, big upfront fees. So again, that's, other ones going to be, there's going to be some, we're not going to know till we get closer to the end of the year exactly. It, kind of what we're going to have, you know, budget is just a best guess of what we, what we're going to do, and that's why we do budget amendments sometimes, when, you know, especially in this year, when we're, we got some significant expenditures. We, we may have to do, when we kind of get to the end of the year and really know, early next year, we may have to do some budget adjustments to reflect what really happened, I, is my, is my opinion.
Should be able to do budget adjustments in June, this way it's crammed up against the budget itself.
Right. So we can't give you an exact number because we just don't, you know, it kind of depends on what we, what our final end of the year expenses are and kind of what that first January big, big expenditures are. So the general fund's the big one. That's always where all the, the biggest issues are. The quarry pool fund, we're going to sit pretty good. We are transferring still twenty thousand dollars, have in here to transfer to the quarry. I mean, every year we've had to put some money in that from our general fund into the quarry pool. We left that in there to operate the quarry pool at this point. So that's a twenty thousand dollars is coming out of our general fund to support that.
What page is that?
What's that, that is page eighteen?
Eighteen.
If you look at eighteen, it's the transfer from zero, zero, one, it's like the fifth line down. We've pretty much done that every year, or for the last couple of years. It's kind of what our transfer has been to keep the balance at a, a zero. I would say this year we did much better with our pool. We, we ended up with a pretty good balance at the end with the attendance at the pool. So I think we've done better on that one than we ever have since I've been here. So I'm hoping next year we have a good, good season and get good turnout. That really helps with our revenues there. Uh, there's nothing on the reserve academy operating fund. That was one we had for several years that had a negative balance, but we'll zero that out. That will be, not be there anymore. I don't know why that carried over, over for several years, but we zeroed that out for next year, and that's not anything that's ongoing, so there will be nothing, no activity there. I'm on page twenty one now, and stop me if I'm going too fast. City street fund has been another one that we struggled with a little bit this last year. We've, our revenues are significantly lower because this last year we had some pretty big grants. The Park Street, you know, paving project was one big one, so it looks like there's a significant reduction in our revenues there, but that is because we had those, the Park Street was three hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. So this just doesn't reflect any, any other grants for this next year. And our expenditures are down. We've expended, appropriated this year four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Again, recognizing that Park Street project, next year we're projecting a hundred and two thousand in expenditures, which leaves us with a negative thirty five thousand, so we got to do some cuts there again to get to zero.
You mean one million?
That was twenty three.
I know what you said, a hundred, what'd you say, a hundred and?
Our, our expenditures for the street fund for next year, I'm looking at. These are the incomes. That's where I was talking about the big reduction. We're on the next pa, I'm on the next page, twenty two. So I'm, I'm looking here.
Okay.
So we spent quite a bit this year because Park Street, we're expecting a hundred and two thousand next year.
Hundred and two thousand, yeah.
But we're going to have to make some more adjustments there because we're, we have to have zero at the end of the year in all these accounts, so we still got some figuring out to do how we're going to cut thirty five thousand more on that fund, which is not a huge amount, but. Special revenue fund on twenty three is just the money we get for the affordable housing, so that's money that comes in that we haven't spent anything on. We've just been building that fund up, so no, no expected expenditures there. Page thirty, twenty four, contingency fund. We did have ninety four thousand in that this year. We're moving all that, and since we have negative balances, we're using that money to help with those negative balances, so that money, our contingency fund will basically be at zero. There was some interest in there, but the contingency fund will be gone. Moving on to twenty five, this is our other big one that we've had some pretty big negative balances in this last year, our municipal capital improvement fund. We're expecting kind of the same in REIT taxes, quite a bit less in intergovernmental resident, intergovernmental revenues. Those again are probably primarily grants that we're not going to be getting, like our served funding for the ag park, that's all ending, so there's a significant, looks like significantly less, but that's because grant funding is, is not going to be there for that next year, that'll, that'll be completed. So our expected revenues, just to get an idea, our twenty twenty four appropriated was two million. We're going to be down in our capital municipal fund, expected revenues of six hundred and sixty six thousand, six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars rounding for next year in revenue. If you look at our expenditures on that, we've taken a lot out. We made a bunch of zeros on that, those funds, because we have a significant decrease in our revenues. With all that, we're still at seven hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, or seven hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars right now in expected expenditures, which puts, still puts us at a minus seventy three thousand dollars in our municipal capital improvement fund. So another one, we're going to have to make some, some, some tougher choices. We tried to cut the things that were pretty obvious, but we're going to have to make, look at this and make some, some tougher choices on this, and where we're going to cut another seventy three thousand dollars. Intergovernmental fund, that, I forget what that, how that was used, but it's zeroed out for this year, whatever. The, yeah, it was a state grant that we got back in twenty twenty two. On page twenty nine, now these are, these, starting on page twenty nine, these are restricted funds, our water and sewer funds, those are restricted funds that all the revenue we get is from fees we collect for water and sewer, and they're only supposed to be spent on water and sewer. So these are now restricted funds that we're not supposed to spend on our general fund cost. Water fund, our revenues are, you know, they're pretty stable because we're not changing our water rates. We, but we're estimating a slight increase of two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars from, we've collected two hundred and twenty seven thousand so far this year, so they're going to be pretty much the same in revenues there. And our expenditures are expected to be two hundred and seventy four, and that's pretty common for these funds. You know, we collect, we collect the revenues and spend them on maintaining and, and the cost for running our water system. So we're basically breaking even there. We have a slight positive balance in our water fund. The next one's the water capital improvement. I should have bought a bottle, bottle of water with me, I'm getting caught in the mouth talking so much. Revenues there again are pretty stable. We were expecting another slight increase. We expected forty three thousand this year, we moved that up to about fifty thousand, just based on what, what it's looking like going forward. We're going to get, so very close there. Total expenditures on this one, this is another one where we pay, there's quite a bit of expenses in this one. So we're in this water capital improvement fund, we're showing a minus one hundred and seventy five thousand dollar balance as it is right now. And you can see we zeroed out some things, but there is some pretty, pretty big expenditures. There's money in there for water rights, which we've been talking about for some time that we need to start looking at. There's some money for a third well. And the big ones on this one that kind of stand out is our vector truck. We bought that vector truck, and there's, we have annual payments on that. The vector truck is fifty three thousand dollars, we pay for that every year, and then the street sweeper is twenty six thousand dollars that we pay every year for the, the finance of those two, two items. And I'll, I'll work with Troy a little bit on this one, because there are some other ones that, like the third well, do we really need forty thousand dollars in there? So we'll try to, to find some more cuts, but we're, we got a pretty big deficit on that one. Stormwater fund is another one. We collect a very small amount of revenue and never spend any of it. We've, yeah, basically it's a, we're gaining eighty dollars over what we had before, so it's a small amount of money that we get from interest in that stormwater fund. Page thirty three, this goes into our sewer now, which.
Doctor Sherriff was coming, he talked, seven o'clock.
Seven thirty, I told him to be here because that's our regular, worked, our regular. The sewer fund, septic, I mean, charges for services are basically going up again slightly, but nothing, no big there, because we are not expecting any rate increases on that, so we're basically pretty flat in revenues on that, on the sewer fund. If you look at what, we've cut some, but if you look at our expenditures there, expected to be one point six million dollars. So again, this is another one where we have significant deficit that we still have to deal with, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in our sewer fund as it is right now. And this is where all our payments on the sewer system come out of. We have nine hundred we pay, let's see. Four hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars every year we pay in our sewer fund for our loans that we took when we built that sewer system is, so we paid this, we've paid this for, since two thousand and six, I believe, and we got quite a few more years to pay on that sewer, which is a huge, a huge amount of money that we pay every year. So we're going to have to do some work on that one. Sewer capital improvement fund, again, revenues are pretty much, we did do a transfer from our sewer fund into this one, so it looks like there's a big increase, but it's just a transfer from one money, one fund to the other to make it basically, kind of break us even on that one. This one is another one. We have, currently have a, a bit of a negative balance, one hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. It's negative, we're going to have to find some cuts. The big one on this one is the wastewater treatment plant. There's membranes, we've talked about this many times, there's membranes in that that have been in, they're way past due being replaced. They were supposed to be replaced years ago, and we've tried to keep them working because they're very expensive. We're going to have to replace those things. What we're working on right now that may change things on this is we're trying to get an emergency grant from ecology. So we have, we have to do some engineering work to get the groundwork done for that, but we're trying to apply for emergency money to replace those, so we won't have to spend it out of this fund. But that's not a given, but that's kind of our plan, so this may not be as bad as it looks if we can get that emergency funding.
So they run about what, three hundred, four hundred thousand?
Yeah, in this case, we have to kind of even do some re-engineering of the system because the flows have to be changed somehow. They're, they're different membranes, so yeah, when we get this engineering, engineering report done.
Right.
We'll see the true cost. It may be a little more than three hundred thousand, but we won't know until we get this engineering report done.
Close to it.
Yeah. Sewer reserve fund is pretty much a wash. Page thirty nine, a little bit different there, but nothing significant. Page thirty nine was another one of those funds, for some reason, for several years, we, we carried a negative balance, and we'll zero that out for next year because we can't keep carrying negative balances. So that's kind of the budget. If you look on page forty one, kind of gives you a, just overall, basically summary of all those. So the top part is revenues for each, each area, and then the bottom is expenditures. So if you look at overall, if we just add up all those negatives I talked to you about, without any more cuts, we'd be at minus eight hundred thousand dollars at the, that we still need to cut for the twenty twenty five, a significant amount of money that we still need to find. So that's kind of our first draft. I would encourage anybody here that wants to look at that, like I said, it's online. I welcome any comments. I tell people I'm an open book. If you have questions or comments, I will come in anytime to work around your schedule. If you want me to answer questions about that, I would be happy to do that. Counsel, please take a close look at those, and if you see things that you have questions about, please get back to us, and suggestions of anything you see we need to add or change or cut, I would, yes. We got, we got some work ahead of us to get done before the end of the year, so I would appreciate yours and anybody in the audience that wants to take some time to look through these and, and see if you see anything that you have questions about and, and provide that to me.
I have a, a question. These numbers, what are they based on?
The numbers are based on, the revenues are just based on what we got from last year.
Or rather, I should say, we, we, we just had audits. These are all based on the current audits, or current audit numbers? How accurate do we know that these numbers are?
The best that I can tell, I guess I got answered. We had, we've gone through an audit, we haven't got the results back. The audit was for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty two, so it doesn't include the last two years. And we're, we haven't got those audit results back. They did look at our past filings and gave us some numbers that we, they thought were off, that were changing, but they're not significant. They don't, what I base, I believe these numbers are correct, based on looking at our accounting system and all the revenues that we have in there, and then comparing that to our bank accounts. And they're, they're, I mean, I do, this is just rough estimates I did myself, and they're within a few thousand dollars, so I'm pretty confident that our, what our budget says and what our bank revenues matching. So there could be slight variations, but I don't see any big, like we've had in the past, I don't see any big discrepancies.
Okay, so when you say audit, you're talking right now about the state auditor, performance audit?
Yes.
And we, we had an internal audit, did we not, when we?
Yes, well, that was for the past years also, up to twenty twenty three. We, we sent, we had somebody go back and redo our books, which was supposed to be done, and so I'm, again, think we're accurate. We had some significant differences in the past years. This, for example, are in twenty twenty four, when we started, passed the twenty twenty four budget, what we passed said we had two hundred and sixty thousand dollars starting balance. Well, when we got the audit done, it actually said minus three hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, which is like six hundred thousand dollars difference. thousand dollars, which is like six hundred thousand dollars difference. So I think we got those straight. From everything I can tell, twenty twenty-four is correct. We, we changed our twenty twenty-four numbers to reflect the real numbers in the starting balances. So I'm, I believe to the best of my knowledge at this point that these numbers for twenty twenty-four are correct.
Okay, that's good. As I recall, the, the city had not closed its books for like three years.
Yes, and that's been completed also.
And we went through, what, three clerk treasures before jam, jam, and nothing was ever, well, nothing was being coordinated correctly.
And unfortunately, that's the spot we got in. And, you know, we've, we've done everything we can do to correct that. We've taken the actions to get that straightened out, and I believe the numbers we got were accurate, and I believe now the twenty twenty-four numbers are accurate.
Okay.
The best of the knowledge I can, can give you right now without having a, the audit we'll have to do at the end of the year to make sure everything's, you know, everything's matching up, the best I can see.
That's good. The, the budget we got starting the year was supposed to balance, and now, now the actual numbers are-
Yeah. It was kind of a shocking big thing.
Minus a million dollars, is that what we got?
Yeah. Yeah, the other big one was our capital improvement, where it said we had a million dollars and we only had ninety, ninety thousand dollars actually when we got the audit done. So between those two things, it was, you know, almost, it was almost a million and a half dollars that we thought we had that we didn't really. So that was a big one to overcome. That's why we're struggling with this year's budget, is truly trying to, trying to fix, and I'm not placing blame, just we just got to move forward and fix these things. So, you know, this is, this is why we're struggling with our budget this year is trying to-
It looks like we've been struggling with our budget for many years, going back, it was minus nine hundred thousand dollars in twenty-two, and minus four hundred thousand dollars in twenty-three, and minus six hundred thousand dollar, no, that's up to this point, minus a million this, this year, minus eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was big.
We're bleeding.
We were. That's why we're trying to get to zero. That's why we're starting with zero and trying to end of the year. You know, actually, we need to end of the year with a little bit of extra money. We need to start building up our starting balance also. So that's not included in here either, because we don't want to end the year with zero dollars. We have to, have enough to carry over into next year to, again, pay our starting balances in twenty twenty-six. So again, part of this is going to be trying to scrape and make sure we end the year with a little bit of a positive balance to, to carry us over.
All right. So, so, you know, if we were down that many years, that's like, what, three million dollars or something? We, we had this in the bank, and so wasn't it-
It's, I think it ended up being, if I look back, clear back to twenty twenty-two, or if I went back to twenty twenty-two, or just our basic starting balance in twenty twenty-two compared to where we're at now, I think it was close to two million dollars that we've gone down from the start of twenty twenty-two to the, to where we are right now. I think was the, the dollar figure.
Okay. Okay. And, and we're confident we can get this last eight hundred thousand dollars trimmed down, so we're back to being able to zero out and have a balanced budget.
We're going to do the best we can, and it's going to take some time. It's going to take, you know, it's going to take a couple of years or two or three years to, we can't make up that big a difference in one year. That's basically our whole year's budget, so we can't, unfortunately, we can't cut that much in one year. It's going to take three years of paying back and trying to get back on track.
And that's minus eight hundred thousand dollars. That actually doesn't include the payback we have to do for these restricted funds, correct?
That's just where we're at today.
So that's, yeah. So we're probably over a million dollars debt going into next year right now.
That's what, that's why I was saying, we're going to have to pay back, you know, two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm guessing it's going to be the amount that we, we have to pay back to, to cover that debt.
Thank you.
Yes. And I guess to our citizens, I, I wish we didn't have to deal with this, but that's, that's what we were dealt with and-
Did you ask the mayor, just did all the money go-
I can't really, I can talk about, I'll, I'll talk about when, we're going to have a budget workshop, we're going to talk about this in detail with the public early next month.
Oh, great, thank you.
And so I will make sure everybody knows, and we'll, we can't really, we could be here all night talking about all this. So that will be an opportunity just to talk about budget and have an interaction with the public to, to let you understand how this happened.
Thank you for that.
Because it's, it's important to me. I'm, I'm a transparent person, I want people to know exactly what happened and what we're doing to fix it, because that's what's important to me, is to try to, you know, we see mistakes, we got to fix it.
Appreciate it.
Seven seventeen, do you have any other, anything else? Get, we'll take a ten-minute break, and then we'll get you on, get you out of here. I know you probably had a long day, so we'll get you on the schedule quickly after we start the regular session at seven-thirty. And we'll have public comment then too, for anybody that would like to provide a public Thank you for your patience on that one, that's a, that's a lot to go through.
We need to be more obvious ahead of time.
True.
It's just, all I did today was put together what our chief financial officer said this is what it costs, and-
I'm interested.
So, I'm, I'm here.
I'm good.
Thank you.
And it's important for you guys to understand, these numbers are based strictly off of the linear contrast. There's nothing else in there other than a population, stockpiling of population is all we've done here for, for-
You turned the air on.
Yeah, you all of a sudden.
No, it's okay.
It's kind of warm again.
Can I turn it a little higher?
No.
It's warm up there, okay? There's one.
I'm playing the copies.
Yeah, this is us here.
We're in this dark room.
This is us right here.
Are we, it's hard to see, yeah, I guess we're over here, yeah.
Yeah, this is us here. Two hundred miles right here.
Um, we can don't see us.
Yeah. This is us. We're in this, in fact, there we are right there.
We're starting, like, when the, when the, uh, when the, uh, when the-
The last, let her be the cute person back. I thought it was going to be, you know, it sounded like-
When they get darn good and ready.
It's like, oh, there, there was a-
It's supposed to be, you know, yeah. That's why, I mean, because that's where it's-
Sure.
Do estimates, but it's how we do that. This is what happened, this is, you know, I want to provide clear, good information, you know, really critically, make sure, we tell the public what's going on, you know.
When that starts happening, we're going to next week.
I don't know the date, we're talking about that for now, but the, 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 the two, the, the, the Saturday, the ninth is what we're talking about right now, but I will say, I say, and now, the person I'm working with, I have to go, I have a trick planned, so when she gets back, that's kind of the date we set up, so if you want, just kind of put it in, I don't know, I think that's, it's a Saturday, where I think we're talking about, it might be ten o'clock in the morning, I've got to try to get as much people as we can. So I don't let you know, it's, I'll, I'll probably just confirm, if you get that, but that's kind of the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's hard to hear. Yeah. It's hard to hear.
So we have a, so that's our main consideration, once it's based on installation, then it goes to the auditors, to you.
Is it just a performance or is it a copy?
I can't comment on that because I don't know.
Yes, the audit is, is still out at the auditor's, we have a lot of data, I don't know, yeah. I don't know what kind it is, I know it's given, I don't know.
Really looking forward to this.
Yeah.
Are these, are these, are the recordings uploaded to the city council?
Yes, this is, it's up here on YouTube. It's on a YouTube channel, just YouTube, new title, and it'll play-
Oh, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Very nice to see you.
Um, yeah.
City Council, we're starting about twenty minutes here, taxes there too.
So-
Yeah, it's toward the end of the, I think I saw.
So, stupid.
So there may be, there are certain things that are-
Serena.
Sorry.
We didn't, it was funny, it was the last time I was here, and you know, get down from, 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 from,
Okay, we've got a few housekeeping things to take care of before we get on with our meeting. So first is a flag salute, if everybody can rise for a flag salute. John, you want to start us out?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda approval, I didn't hear any additions or deletions, is there anything now you would like to add?
I would like to amend the agenda under new business, I have a budget resolution I'd like to present.
Second.
Budget resolution? It's been proposed to do an amendment to our new business, it'll be number nineteen budget resolution, and there's been a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes, I have that added on here. Anything else?
That was just for, for the.
Now we have to go back and adopt.
The full amendment.
Make, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
It's moved.
Second.
Set, moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as amended, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, approval of the minutes, the meeting minutes from ten eight twenty twenty four are before you, is there any changes or?
No approval as presented.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the minutes from ten eight twenty twenty four, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar, better hear someplace probably for all this paperwork. Consent calendar for October eighth twenty twenty four through October twenty second twenty twenty four, consisting of payroll EFTs in the amount of forty two thousand seven hundred and three dollars and forty eight cents, claims checks three two seven seven zero through three two seven nine seven, and ETFs in the amount of seventy three thousand two hundred dollars and eighty three cents, for a grand total of one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and four dollars and thirty one cents, no liquor or cannabis license renewals.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no executive session, so we'll move on to presentations. I thank Sheriff Sanders for coming here tonight to do a little bit of presentation on police services, so if you could come up to the stand and do your presentations, your presentation.
All righty, well, good evening, I wish it were under better circumstances. Last time I was, oh, there we go, now we're talking. I think last time it was better circumstances, it was a meet and greet when I first got elected, I haven't been back since. So, my name is Derek Sanders, I'm the sheriff of Thurston County, I appreciate the mayor and the council for having me here tonight. Late last week, Mayor Waterson reached out to me, he explained that Tenino is having a pretty severe budget problem and wanted just a basic informational what-if police package if the city of Tenino were to contract with the sheriff's office like the city of Rainier and the town of Bucota do. So, with that being said, I, I want to reiterate with this, I am neutral. I, I have no intentions of coming in here and trying to take over Tenino Police Department. I said that when I got elected, because Wayne Fournier hemmed me pretty hard, like, you know, the last sheriff wants to take over Tenino, and I'm like, you guys can do what you want to do, like, it's not my thing. At the same time, I'm, I'm stuck between two positions where I have no intentions of taking over Tenino Police Services, like, that's not on my wish list, I also refuse to see Tenino residents go without police coverage. So, somewhere in between there, I have to, I have to provide a realistic proposal of what it would cost if the city of Tenino were to opt for the sheriff's office contracted service. So, with that being said, I passed a little handout to each of you that goes over, this is not a contract, this is a rough budget number that was calculated by my chief of financial services, and the way that she calculated this was taking what Rainier pays for their contract and then extrapolating that across Tenino's population, that is how we came to this number, and that to us was the fairest way to say, here's what it costs. That way, no one can come in and say, you're lowballing to try and get the contract and steal the police department, no one can come in and say, you're highballing it so that there's just no way Tenino could ever afford this. This is literally a math problem, that's how we came to these numbers. So, just a bit of an overview, the sheriff's office already contracts with the city of Tenino. My, our understanding was that under the previous city leadership, Tenino slashed its police department FTEs, gave their officers raises, but as a result of that, they couldn't staff the department twenty-four hours a day, and as a result, they needed the sheriff's office to step in and cover that. That was a very friendly contract, I think that also goes to show that we're not in it here to try and steal Tenino Police Department. We have a signed contract that's going back before the board again this year, we pay, you guys pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year for police coverage from midnight to six AM every night, it's a pretty smoking deal. So, our goal was really just to help the city of Tenino out, it wasn't to try and, you know, smush anyone to the ground or, or charge an exorbitant fee or anything like this. Now, with that being said, in the event that Tenino opted to contract with the county sheriff's office, I think everyone can recognize that between our three contract cities, the number of deputies that we have in our districts wouldn't suffice, we would have to add something in there. And so, what this proposal includes is also adding basically a deputy sheriff seven days a week during day shift hours, when you're going to have the most call volume and whatnot, and at nighttime, it would remain status quo, where right now, between the hours of midnight and six, it is the greater deputy sheriff who is roaming this large district, who is responsible for nine-one-one calls. Thankfully, the city of Tenino generates very few nine-one-one calls during those hours, so. To cover what the list of services actually includes, that's twenty-four-seven police response in the city limits of Tenino, so even in a scenario where there isn't a deputy inside the city of limits of Tenino, they still respond like any other nine-one-one call or any other call for service to the city. That also includes specialty response, so when Tenino takes a homicide, you get a homicide detective, when Tenino has a barricaded domestic violence suspect, you get the SWAT team, all those types of things. That also includes jail services, so, Tenino, we, we don't book it in Esquali Tribal Jail, our prosecutor will not allow it due to their interpretation of state law, and so, as a result of that, it would require obviously then that any misdemeanor arrests that occur in the city limits of Tenino would then go to the Thurston County Jail, not in Esquali Tribal Jail, that cost is included. It includes evidence storage, so anytime there's a criminal act that occurs in the city of Tenino and evidence has to be collected, we store that at our, at our department. This also includes all overtime related to police investigations and pre-planned events, so we know we have trail days and some of those bigger events, that includes the overtime billed into that. It also includes, you know, when Tenino assigned deputy takes a DV and has to hold over late, it includes the overtime billing for that. The contract also includes all the training and the certification upkeep for TCSO staff, does not include any code enforcement, we know that, I think, Bucota and Tenino may have the same code, so we don't do code enforcement, we don't do that for the county either. And it also includes a TCSO representative, typically a lieutenant, at all of the council meetings or most of the council meetings, the ones that were needed at, and then obviously, I'm always willing to come talk to you guys whether or not we have a contract or not. So the basic cost estimate, and, and again, these are rounded estimated figures, is that twenty twenty-five, twenty-six would be at a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year. Every year would have an escalator of inflation at two percent, I believe is what Chief Thompson has recommended to keep up with, I mean, that's not going to keep up with inflation, but it, it helps us keep up a little bit with increased service costs. And again, the first option is just the, the split deputy for Bucota-Tenino, obviously, Tenino's going to have more call volume than Bucota, so they're, they would probably spend more time in Tenino theoretically. And then the second option actually goes down to the basic plus a school resource officer. Now, the way that Rainier has this set up is that Rainier basically pays us the fee, and then they also have the school district chip in, I believe it's forty thousand dollars for the city and forty thousand for the school district, and that gets them a full-time school resource officer. And then in the summertime, when the SRO gets rotated out, they still work that, they still work that area, so they still work the city of Tenino or the city of Rainier, that kind of thing. And at that point in time, the cost goes up, obviously, it starts at three hundred thousand with a two percent escalator. And between those two, you know, the big thing I think that people have concerns about is how often will a deputy actually be in the city limits of Tenino? Now, under the first option, we estimate about eighty percent of the time during day shift hours, that's, that's business hours, that you would see a deputy in the city limits of Tenino. And that's based on just the fact of having that deputy going between Tenino and Bucota, obviously, if you have a nine-one-one call in Bucota, then that deputy isn't necessarily parked, you know, right down the street in Tenino. Under the second alternative, where you've got a school resource officer who's able to break free from the school kind of thing and handle immediate nine-one-one emergencies, it's probably closer to ninety-five percent daytime coverage is what we're specifically talking about. So those, that's just the basic outline of a proposal that you guys can consider. I want to reiterate, I have no, I have no opinion on this, this is, this is a problem for the city of Tenino to resolve, and I was simply asked to give an, to give an option, and so that's why I'm here today. And again, I wish it were under better circumstances, I will say that since taking over an office, I think the sheriff's office and the city of Tenino have the best relationship they've had in decades. The prior sheriff did not commission Tenino police officers to conduct any law enforcement outside of the city, so you could have a burglar right outside the city limits of Tenino, and Tenino police officers would sit inside the city limits and wait and do nothing. First thing I did when I took over office was commission all of Tenino Police Department to conduct law enforcement anywhere in the county. You know, we, again, we had no issues taking over the after hour call response for them. I think Chief Otterer has done a fantastic job. I think Tenino's as stable as I can ever remember it in my ten years of law enforcement here. So, obviously, the budget stuff doesn't sound good, it's not my business, but I don't want this to come across as, you know, Tenino's an inferior product or anything like that. My, my opinion on this matter is, is very strictly that of, here's an option, so. I'm happy to take any questions, I know another big piece is response time, and that is a, it doesn't matter who your police department is, that is a what-if scenario every single time you lay it out. You know, if Tenino takes a stabbing right now, your response time is going to be quick, but then if you call nine-one-one to report a car theft, your response time's going to be really slow while they deal with that stabbing, and that's the same concept that applies through every police department and sheriff's office in our country. So there's a lot of what-if scenarios that can play into that, so just to answer that question ahead of time, when you ask me what the response time is in the county, it depends, I've been to calls in thirty seconds, I've been to calls in forty-five minutes, it all depends on, on the night. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so you mentioned twenty-five thousand dollars is a smoking deal, you said a smoking deal, to you. I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars, we pay you guys to answer sixty-seven calls, it shows right here, from midnight to six, and we actually, during the daytime, we have officers that go out and help you guys, one hundred and sixty-five calls during the day. So, smoking deal, I don't, I don't know how you can.
There's a really.
It's benefiting you guys.
Yes, it's a, there's a mutual aid response, and there's a big difference between mutual aid and we're going to come handle everything for you, right? You're describing mutual aid, which is when the David car, the car that works this district, has its Tenino officer come back them on a call, there's a really big difference between that and having the David car handle nine-one-one calls in the city limits of Tenino without a Tenino police officer helping them, that, there's a big difference there. When you talk about risk, when you talk about all the different things that we are inheriting for, I don't know what that breaks down to per night, but it's really small. It's, it's, that's a really small number for the county. We, it's basically a placeholder, it's, it's non-existent in my budget.
But then also as taxpayers, aren't we already paying you guys to answer these calls already?
Effectively, you guys pay the jail, the jail is half my budget, it's twenty-five million dollars to run a jail that houses felony defendants. So, when you talk about the cities, the way, the easiest way to describe this is that, yes, if you were in the city and you pay property taxes, some of that does go to the county, and that does mean that you're paying for the sheriff's office, and the easiest way to formulate that is that you're paying for services at the jail, which are extremely expensive, it's over a hundred dollars a day to, to house, to house one inmate. The unincorporated citizens, those who live outside of city limits, those are the individuals who are paying property tax for both the jail and their, their police response services, so. By law, all felonies have to be booked at the Thurston County Jail.
And right now, we have a school resource officer that's there all the time, even if there's more calls, there's still, he's still going to be there.
I think they are available to respond to calls, I mean, I think they're primarily, we spend their time at this, at the school, but just like any situation, if something happened and we needed an officer, they can, my understanding is they can respond to calls.
That's how ours work as well, yeah, I mean, they're not gonna, if there's a stabbing next door to the school, they're not going to sit there and, and play with the kids at recess, they're going to run across the street and handle the, handle the call, yep.
The question on, does not include any code enforcement, what, what code is that?
Uh, well, there's a lot of issues in, like, Bucota, for instance, with, like, trashy RVs on private property, we don't do code enforcement, that's, so code enforcement is like when people cite public health ordinances and, and try to enforce codes, like, non-criminal code enforcement, like, your property looks like crap, we're not going to come be the property police. None of the police departments here that I know of engage in that, it's usually a code enforcement officer employed by the city or the county. So like, Bucota and Tenino have their own code enforcement officer who goes around and, and cites for public health issues and things like that, codes that are set forth by, by the city.
Okay, so that's still a need that the city would have to address one way or the other?
Yes, and as far as I know, you guys have a code enforcement officer.
There's some changes.
We had, sorry.
There's some changes, but we have a code, we'll have a code enforcement officer.
How does, how does the city's police building, code enforcement building play into this? I know we've, we've already given you permission to use an office there, and, and we see you guys there coming and going all the time, which we're happy for, what's your, what, how does that affect what we have here? Your, the services you're proposing?
What, I guess, can you, can you clarify, so you guys have Tenino Police Department, is that what you're?
We, we have the building there, and if, if we do not have a police department, you know, it's available for your use, and we're already providing that use to the sheriff's department in a small way. Is that a, a place that this David officer can be based out of?
Absolutely.
Is that something you expect?
We will still be paying all the utilities, all the insurance.
Yeah, we're still paying everything.
The city will pay.
If the building's empty, we still have to pay it off.
Yeah, I, I mean, we wouldn't have any issue putting a substation there, and we already, as you know, we stop by all the time, I, I know, I see the David cars talking with the Tenino cops, it's.
For the restroom, I think, is pretty much.
Hey, you know, when you gotta go, you gotta go.
Hey, I'm over sixty, I, I.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
We were talking, the, the basic scenario was, was the option one, right? And option two, where's option two? We actually get two officers roaming the David territory, our territory, our part of the, the county?
Well, option two includes a school resource officer, that's, that's, that's essentially what Rainier does, is they have this option two where we have, we have a deputy who also inherits Rainier as part of their normal duties, so that's the one car in the entire Yelm district, and they also respond to emergencies within the city of Rainier, they can patrol Rainier, we see them doing area checks in Rainier, but on top of that, they also have a school resource officer who works there Monday through Friday and handles all incidents in the school and can also break free from the school to handle big incidents that are occurring inside the city. That's what option two is, the, the graphic on the back is showing you that right now, our staffing is not great, which is why I don't have anything for twenty twenty-four, I don't have any, even twenty twenty-five, it's, it's rough. However, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, with the new public safety tax, we're getting twenty-seven new deputies, it changes things pretty drastically, it puts a second deputy in every district, including this district, so, and that does not include what's involved in this package here, that doesn't include the school resource officer and a potential deputy split between Bucota-Tenino.
But, for all intensive purposes, that, those two deputies or one deputy still has that two hundred mile radius that they have to cover, so they're not right here.
Outside of, outside of Tenino.
Well, he said they're going to be here eighty to ninety percent of the time.
That's, no, that's for the, that's for these two that are inside the package, I mean, effectively, the, the theory behind this, right, is that in twenty twenty-seven, my goal is to have ten deputies on duty at all times, right now, we have seven as a minimum. That ten puts two deputies in the remaining three districts that right now only have one deputy in them, that's the Tumwater area northwest, that's the Rochester Tenino area southwest, and the Yelm-Rainier area southeast, each only have one deputy inside of them. By twenty twenty-seven, we anticipate each of those districts will have two deputies inside of them, that does not include if the city of Tenino contracted and had a school resource officer and a deputy split, let's say seventy-five twenty-five between Bucota-Tenino, that's two more inside this district, for a total of four.
Four.
But, keep in mind, those two deputies are only responsible during daytime hours, those would be daytime hour deputies, that's when most of the call volume is going to occur. At nighttime, it would fall back to those two, two patrolled deputies that are responsible for the greater district, just like it is today.
Dave, have you reached out to the Bucota mayor about maybe getting a contract with us? The Tenino PD?
No, I, I, I know they had mentioned it, so no, I haven't, they pay you about fifty, I think you said they're paying you about fifty-eight thousand dollars?
It's about fifty-five thousand dollars a year that we bill.
Oh, you have a contract with?
We have a contract with Bucota, correct, yeah, and that's kind of what I'm talking about, is that.
I, sorry, I thought it said in twenty-seven, you would have.
Between the two contracts, then between Bucota and Tenino, we couldn't just do that with the one district car that's roaming around this whole district.
No, 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 I, I just misunderstood you on that one.
It's all good.
And then we also have a lot of unwanted campers, you guys, would it be a slow response time to that, too?
It, it, it depends, it's, it's really challenging to give, like, tonight, it's busy, I can tell you, the radio is buzzing tonight, but most of what I hear is occurring up on the Martin Way Corridor, which is our busiest district, I, I don't have my, I'll have my car, I'm really sad about not having my car right now, I'll have my car to open up my laptop easily and see what's going on in the county, it just all depends, you know, when we get nine-one-one calls and, and it is, make no mistake, like, there is going to be a difference if you contract with the sheriff's office, there just is, I, we can't replicate what Tenino does, and contrarily, Tenino can't replicate what we do, Tenino doesn't have a SWAT team, Tenino doesn't have homicide detectives, like, I don't care which way you look at this, there are pros and cons, and everyone here can make that determination for themselves, I don't need to go into the details of that. However, we have to triage nine-one-one calls, right? So, people getting hurt, people fighting, high-value felony crime, felony crimes in progress that are property, property crimes, we're obviously going to prioritize those where they occur, and that includes the city of Tenino, so, those higher, higher, higher severity crimes are going to get triaged first, the lower stuff is going to get triaged second, period.
Question we talked about a little bit was like crime rates, and I think you said that you don't see high crime rates in areas like when you're talking about Rainier?
No, no, Rainier is a very quiet, quaint little town, it has the same problems that every other, every other community has, right, they've got speeders, they've got domestic violence, but no, we don't take, I mean, we had a really bad compound in Rainier, it's been eliminated, it's all fixed up now, it looks great. You know, they, they go through these ebbs and flows, we know that Bucota's got some problem houses, and we are working on getting a larger police presence down there, the directive has been sent out, and I know for a fact that there's been a, a larger presence of, of deputies and sergeants down there, because I see them on the map when I do have my computer, they're down there doing the. Um, they're down there doing the area checks and trying to get traffic stops and, and that kinda thing. Um, but again, a lot of the complaints down in Bucota are, you know, a trashy RV on a piece of property. And, you know, that, for all intents and purposes, doesn't come down to a law enforcement deal. That's, that's more of a code enforcement, um, city. It's really more of a city-town issue of, here's the laws that we have about not having those on here, and they're civil penalties. They're not, they're not crimes. It's not a crime to have a, a junky-looking house.
And just one other quick thing. I think you mentioned when we, we talked, uh, like, speed enforcement. You have a group of people that, if you notice, we say, hey, we're having a lot of speed problems here. You have a group of people that can help.
Right now, we have two deputies on our traffic enforcement team, and we anticipate increasing that to four by about the same time as this. So, probably in the next one to two years, we should have four of those deputies who are doing purely traffic enforcement.
Going fast down Park Street, you can, you can kind of do some extra enforcement and things like that.
Yeah, we, we do a lot of, um, we do DUI enforcement. We get a lot of our funding through that from grants, Target Zero. So, they'll give us money to put, you know, four or five deputies out on the road on a Friday night, for instance. Um, and we can do the same thing. They do it with, like, distracted driving as well, speed enforcement, that kinda thing. Um, but again, there's, there, I don't wanna make any misrepresentation. There is a difference between that and having the Tenino cop who is just sitting inside the city, available twenty-four, well, not quite twenty-four hours a day, but eighteen hours a day. Um, there is a difference, so it's a real factor. I mean, there's a, there's a budget conversation here, and then there's also a conversation about what do the people want. Both of them are valid.
We've become very fond of our, uh, police personnel in Tenino. If this was an option that, that the city chose, what are the chances of the sheriff's department picking them up so we see the same faces we've grown used to?
Well, we are, we are hiring a lot right now, um, so we are always willing to take lateral applicants. Uh, it's just a matter of them applying. They do have to still pass the background. Um, that's state law. We can't just bring them on board and say, you're good to go. They still have to go past the same background, uh, to get hired on as a lateral, but we're offering a bonus right now.
Maybe I shouldn't have said that.
I'm not trying to recruit Tenino Police Department like that, no. That was more for anyone watching. If you work up in, like, Kent, we'd love you.
I guess the last thing I had, I just wanna be clear with people, 'cause I know there's a lot of concern about this. I did not approach you to say that I wanted you to take over. This was, to me, is just a responsibility of me, of I, to bring options to the table when we're talking about budget things. That is my only intent. And just like you said, there's a conversation that has to be had. This probably couldn't even happen till at least the middle of next year, or probably the end of next year, if we're really looking at it.
Probably closer to twenty-twenty-six.
So, this is a conversation. It's just, I'm asking for information so we can make informed decisions when we have, 'cause we're gonna have some tough ones. And like you said, it's, it's budget and what services we want. So, that is my only intent with, with contacting the sheriff, and I've never believed I've approached you and said that I want you to take over.
Nope.
I just want that to be clear to the public. This is not what that was about. It's not why I contacted him.
And I'd like to make a comment myself. I've, I've been approached about the issue, and, and the phrase used was defund the police, which is kind of a culture war, dog whistle kinda thing, and I wanna be clear that what we're doing here has nothing to do with any political agenda. We're, we're happy with our police officers. They're professional. They serve us well. Nobody has issues along those lines. This is not a political decision the city has to make. It is an economic, financial decision, just so everyone's clear on that.
And these proposal numbers, they haven't been vetted yet with the county, right?
Nope, nope. Uh, ultimately, everything, because I'm not the end-all-be-all authority in this county, it still has to go through, uh, attorneys, sixty pounds of red tape, and the Board of County Commissioners. So, this is, these were just rough numbers of-
So, it could be really higher.
No, I don't think so. And the reason I don't is because I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Tenino to look across the street at Rainier and what they're paying, and then say, why is ours four times the cost? Um, that's where these numbers came from. It's a math problem for us. Um, so, this, we're, I'm confident, my chief financial officer is confident that this is what it would cost to rent it, to remedy these services. Um, and for me, I mean, we're just, I don't feel comfortable gouging, gouging a city just because we can. Um, I don't think that's taking care of your people.
It's good to know.
Anything else? I very much appreciate being here, and, uh, yes.
Thank you guys so much.
We'll reach out and keep in, keep in contact as we move forward.
Get your car back. Thank you.
Okay. The next presentation we have, real quick, uh, not real quick, the next presentation we have is from Tenino Community Service Center. Just so people know, we have a cold storage warehouse down the street here that they've used for many years since two thousand and six. Uh, they lease it, basically pay us a nominal amount to cover the electricity cost of that building. There has been a question about whether we could sell that to them to use, and not only the cold storage building, but the old city shop that's next to it. There's some things we have to get worked out, but they would just like to do a short presentation on, on their program and what they're looking at as far as possibly selling that facility to them. So, Jody, do you wanna start, or?
I was gonna make you talk, Matt.
It's not every day that I get to tell her what to do.
Uh, you can talk. You don't have any problem talking.
No, I can. Oh, yeah, I can. I brought my little cheat sheets. So-
Where's our cake?
Where's the cake?
Oh, no cake? No.
It's at the warehouse.
It's, yeah. Not today. Come to Winterfest. It was cake all day. Um, so, I want to, um, have Pat Heller give some history on, um, Tenino Community Service Center, and then, uh, I'll throw in my spiel. I'm not asking for money from the, uh, city of Tenino though.
That's good.
That would be a tough one.
Well, this was our fortieth year. We had cake everywhere, and we still have cake. And, uh, we have grown from, well, we had three locations. Now, we're on the main street. And, uh, we were doing maybe fifty clients a week. We are now doing in Tenino, five thousand three hundred and eighty-four in the month of September.
Oh, my God.
These are individuals.
It's individuals, not families.
Yeah, individuals. Not family, but they're large families.
I mean, that's more people than are in Tenino.
Uh, we also service, uh, Rainier, Valley Heart. We've opened a satellite there. We're taking care of them. And, uh, they have large numbers also. We do the senior center in Rainier also. They feed seniors every Monday and Wednesday. Our greatest, uh, size of, uh, age group is, uh, nineteen to fifty-five.
Nineteen to fifty-five, yeah.
And then it's fifty-five and older. They're the next large group. So, we have a lot of food to give out, but we need a little larger facility. Where our seams are busting. That's why we're here.
But you, did you mention you do it in Bucota also, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we do Bucota. Yes. We deliver-
Has a big need also.
We deliver today-
Twenty.
To twenty people.
Said can't get out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the summer, we take care of the kids in Bucota.
Do you think that Robin, do, do you think she foresaw this years down the-
Oh, yeah, she's all, not, she, not these numbers, of course.
Yeah.
But she's always wanted to do-
Yeah, I remember when it started.
Yeah, yeah. She reminds me of Robin.
Yeah, she does, me too.
Yeah.
So, just, can I say one, the cold storage warehouse, just so people are aware, I think you said it was built in two thousand and six, right? Around two thousand and six, we think, is kinda when that was built?
Yep.
And that was built, if I understand right, with a grant-
Yes.
From Thurston County for the food banks. So, that building was not, we didn't pay for that building, right? That was done through a grant, though.
Yes, that's correct. It's a, it's a grant money for all of it. Um, so, I need to clarify a few things so that everyone does not, uh, go bonkers and say, why are we feeding Rainier? Rainier is, lost their food bank at, just after Christmas. And there's a lot of people that can't get to us on a Monday, or a Tuesday and a Thursday, so they can go to Rainier and get food on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Um, they, they have their own food coming in. Of course, we, we are helping with that as well, with the ordering that we can do. Um, the senior center in Rainier cooks their own food. Uh, it's all home-cooked. It's yummy.
Yes, it is. It's really good.
Just so you know, it's really good. Um, so, they are feeding, at least two-thirds of their folks are from Tenino on, um, on Mondays and Wednesdays. Uh, so, it's, yes, we're in Rainier, but we're not in Rainier.
That's okay.
But our people go to Rainier.
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, today, we had sixty-seven drive-ups, sixty-seven families. Families of five, families of four, families of eight-
It's really sad.
-that came in today. I needed a nap after that. Um, so, um, but we're out of room. We, we need more room. Um, we're busting at the seams. Um, Kevin's our driver. He can tell ya. It's like, where am I putting this load? I'm like, oh, well, you know, Tetris. Um, so what we're looking at is that there is funding, federal funding and state funding, for us to be able to expand that warehouse, and to do some things that need to be done down there. However, I can't even attempt to do anything with that until we have some things on some paper, and to get some things changed down there. Or it's not, it, I, I can't even, I can't even open up that application at this point. Um, so that's what we're, that's what we're here for.
And just to make, let you know, we're people here, and the, the, one of the big issues is the zoning down there still. You know, we've talked about this several times. Somehow I got zoned as residential, which wouldn't really allow them to do what they wanna do. So, I'm still working with our planning commission to see the options to get that zoned appropriately for those locations.
Yeah, I think just to mention that it, it had, it was mentioned at one of the meetings I watched-
Yeah.
-that they think it was a mistake.
Yes, in two thousand and twelve, they do believe that it, somebody got happy with a crayon. Um, two, two meetings ago, when we were going over some of the things, um, on their new planning map, we found three errors that needed to be taken care of because somebody got happy with a crayon. Um, so, these are things that need to be adjusted, um, whether it's for us or whether it's for another neighbor who, wow, they didn't know that that's what they got next door. Um, or they, you know, that kinda thing. So, we need to really take a fine tune and look at that map and make sure that the, the other, the other properties that the city owns is zoned correctly as well, because that could be, that could be part of your problem.
And I reached out to Will today, yesterday, to just make sure that gets pushed on the agenda and gets, trying to get it taken care of as quick as possible.
So, they don't have to wait until next year.
We can't wait till next year.
They, we wanna, they're, have grants available, and so we're trying to be able to get that done so they can start applying for those grants. So, I have reached out to the planning commission to say, how can we get this done quickly? And we got a new planner. Will reached out to her and asked her to, you know, can she please give us options to get that done? So, that's, that's hopefully, last meeting for an odd reason. I don't know what happened, but we didn't have people show up.
You just won't even talk about last meeting, 'cause that was-
So, we're gonna get that next meeting and hopefully get some, get some action on that, so we can help move, help the food bank and move forward, 'cause they do great work, and they're a gem of our city, so, thank you.
So, um, yeah, because if you walked into our, uh, walk-in freezer, you'd eat a chicken leg right away. So.
George?
George?
Uh, yeah, George has been working with them also.
Hi, Mayor and Council. So, here tonight as George Sharp, role program manager for the Thurston Economic Development Council. And I, and as through our study program, helped the food bank get a almost forty-thousand-dollar grant to help build their capacity. As part of that grant, we're gonna be doing a strategic plan for them. This is gonna be a one, three, and five-year strategic plan. And so, we'll be asking stakeholders, uh, pretty soon, we're going through the board stuff right now, but we'll be asking stakeholders what they need from this community and from that. And as you know, I have a love for Bucota, and I have a love for Tenino, and so I'm super excited to be part of this project, too. And we'll roll that out probably in January to the community, saying, this is what came out of the strategic planning process. These are the needs. We're also helping to identify funding sources for now and for their future needs as well, so. But the EDC's committed to them, and, uh, as you know, I love Tenino.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, does the council have any other questions for us? Uh, we invite you to come down at any time to come look at the facilities.
And have cake?
Yes. Linda, I will make absolute sure there's cake. So, what flavor do you want?
The office has treats for visitors.
I do. I do have treats for visitors. So, come down and, uh, please give me a call and, um, tour the facility. We can, we can look at the warehouse as well, but, um, that's, uh, that's where we are. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, and, uh, I'd just like to say, you know, for all the issues we should, you see us struggling with, this, this is what our town's about, things like this. We, you know, we're gonna struggle with things time to time, but really, people like this is the gem of our community, so I appreciate the work you do. Okay, and we're moving on to public comment.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, before we do that, can we get the chief up here?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear him respond to Sheriff Sanders.
One, uh, so we're starting public comments. The chief would like to speak before we open up the public comments, so go ahead if you wanna speak.
Absolutely. Um, I'd like to thank the community members for being here. Thank you for your civic engagement. Mr. Mayor, council members, um, would you like me to give a brief staff report or say?
If you wanna just do it, yeah.
So, we, uh, I'll skip over the basic police activity that we've been engaging in, uh, on a daily basis. And I will move right into, uh, some budgets. We're coming up on budget season, or we're there. Uh, Mayor, you briefly touched on this. We are currently almost twenty-nine percent under budget so far this year. I estimate that we'll have a savings of between one hundred thousand and one hundred and twenty thousand in our allotted budget by the end of the, the calendar year. And that isn't taking into account the fifty thousand dollars in revenue that the school resource officer brings in and the roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of public safety sales dollars that the, uh, voters of Thurston County approved. So, effectively, we, and I, and Mr. O'Callaghan, you briefly touched on this, and I'd like to address the issue because it's been a topic, uh, in my office and with the city, that, as we all know, law enforcement budgets have one line, and it's expenditures. We don't, we don't have a revenue line. Yet, historically, over the past five years, the police department has not brought in significant amounts of revenue to the city. With the implementation of the school resource contract at fifty thousand dollars and the voter-approved initiative for public safety sales tax, there's additional revenues of fifty thousand for the school resource office, officer, and an estimate of between seventy-five and ninety thousand that are gonna be realized through public safety sales tax. Now, those dollars go into the general fund, and they're never reflected as an incoming line item, for lack of better terms, in the police budget. So, as I go over these numbers and we talk about it, and as I field questions, I'll refer to, refer to things as an effective budget sometimes. We have worked very hard at being frugal with our spending, uh, turned down new vehicles, really kept our spending in line with training and equipment, and cut Maria nearly seventy thousand out of the proposed budget.
Maria, he's talking. He's, he's looking for you.
So, we've cut nearly seventy thousand dollars out of a proposed budget for twenty-twenty-five. And that does not include the between seventy-five and ninety thousand dollars that we are expected in public safety sales tax revenue and the school resource officer. So, if you were to essentially give a, a, a credit to the police department, since there is no revenue line there, our effective budget would be somewhere in the range of five sixty to five eighty. And we have been historically running between a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget and seven hundred thousand dollar budget for the last four years, which would represent roughly thirty to thirty-eight percent of a general fund with revenues estimated at one point eight million dollars. So, as far as the numbers go, um- industry standard or historically, a police department does consume roughly thirty, forty, sometimes more of a general fund. So we feel as though we've been good stewards of the citizens' money and tax revenue in running our police department. Um, any questions on my figures? And again, these are rough numbers, but we're pretty confident, and we've crunched them a number of times.
How you doing with grants, Chief?
Um, I put a proposal together three months ago. We had a meeting with a professional grant writer who's experienced a lot of success with neighboring agencies. Uh, she came in, presented a contract, and, uh, it has been brought up at, um, our department head's meeting and remains on the mayor's desk for approval. But we have not, uh, pursued it. I've been waiting for approval from the mayor.
Been done for three months, you said?
Uh, at least two. And the, the, the grant writer was going to be funded through grant dollars that we already had that are going to expire at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Wondering why we never haven't heard about this yet.
I don't think we discussed it in our, our.
No, we haven't, we have not seen that, seen the, uh, the contract.
I think we had touched on it in our committee, public safety committee meeting, but that was when the plan was hatched, probably five months ago.
No, yeah.
That was just an idea.
Yeah, so we, we are, uh, patiently waiting and anticipating some success with that proposal. There are a lot of law enforcement and public safety grants available. And we just have not tapped into those, uh, sources of revenue.
And that would be a way to pay for foreign officers', uh, salary?
I, I posed that question to, to the grant writer, and she said that there are a lot of grants out there that cover, uh, maintaining staffing and, um, so yes, to answer your question, yes. There are grants available to maintain staffing levels and to add additional officers.
Equipment and training also.
Okay.
And she had indicated that considering we have a state highway and railroad tracks that go through our community, that would open us up for the potential to be eligible for federal grants.
Oh.
Bumps those, bumps those funds of lists.
Yeah, sounds like it's something we need to do, huh?
Well, that's why, that's, that's what my question was, is to actually the mayor, how come we haven't been told about this or? Nothing's been done about it.
He's asking you.
Uh, I guess, to be honest with you, it's, uh, I think it was something that, uh, grants usually open up the start of the year, and I just hadn't moved forward with it. Usually when I looked at grants, most of the grants now are not opening until the first of the year, and I just hadn't.
Now, this one, I think.
But this was.
So we had had, we had had, on the advice of the grant writer, uh, she had indicated that the best course of action would be to get in and lay the preliminary groundwork, because in order to apply for these grants, you've gotta spend a significant amount of time during a study of the demographics, the city's finances, the city's structure. So she was intending on utilizing the previous two or three months to set the stage. And when these grants become available at the first of the year, shortly thereafter, she'd be ready to jump on them and apply for them. And, uh, it would also allow us to spend the grant money that needs to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four in order to get her moving on these projects. So the, even though the grants aren't open until twenty-five typically, the, the resources spent now would position us favorably to get those grants in twenty twenty-five.
Right, yeah.
And I'm not opposed to that. I have no, no objection to that. I, yeah, we can move forward on it. I know that's been proposed, and maybe I did wait a little long, but, uh...
I think it's something you need to move on.
I mean, it's not, it's just a matter of saying, go ahead. It's, we have the money, it's grant money, and, yeah.
Excuse me, Chief. Um, the, the, what was it? Hundred, a hundred twenty thousand? What, what was that for again?
Cost savings.
Cost savings.
Cost savings, okay.
Um, and I don't have any hard numbers on any, any significant cost in the last two months of the year, but it's my understanding that we are kind of done paying our, our big bills. And essentially, we've got labor costs for the next two months. So we're currently sitting at roughly five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars spent on a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar approved budget. Why the big difference? Because we've, we were, the, the flag was raised that we're in financial trouble, and we responded appropriately as a, as a department.
And when was the last time you guys actually asked for something?
It has been less, uh, not in my tenure. We've kept our, uh, we, there are a couple benefits to having such a small city. We don't need new vehicles every year. Those measure in the hundred thousand dollar range to have a completely outfitted vehicle. We're running a fleet of vehicles that are well-maintained, and one of them, my vehicle is getting pretty old, but.
How old is your vehicle?
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
And didn't it have a problem?
We fixed it. Uh, baling wire and bubble gum. No, it's a, it's a great vehicle. It's still serviceable, and, uh, I'm hoping to run it through twenty twenty-five.
Why is zero budget now?
Um, I, I think we touched on that. Mr. Mayor, you can probably help me out.
What was the question I didn't hear? What's?
Why is zero budget now?
Why is there a budget now?
Zero. Why is zero budget now?
Is, is this, are, are the intentions to get the, the deficit to zero by the end of the year? Or moving into twenty-five?
I, the, the, the thing about zero budgeting, the idea behind zero budgeting, besides the fact that we're already in the hole, so we really truly do have zero. But typically, agencies will start with a zero budget and try to balance that versus using carryover money, because carryover money is really one-time money that you don't want to put towards doing personnel or those kind of things. So typically, a lot of organizations will start with a zero balance, not, not consider the money that was carried over and balance their budget on that without using those carryover dollars. Now, we just don't even have them anyway, so it's, it's easy for us. We don't have them, so.
I, I would like us to be at zero, I think everyone in the room and the, the citizens would agree.
But, but I will say, part of, I mean, this is part of the big issue that we're dealing with, and to be frank, when we started, when we started the twenty twenty-four budget, we thought we had, starting our general fund, which the police services come from, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We really had minus three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So that's six hundred thousand dollars less that we had in our general fund. Uh, so that budget, even though we had a budget of, you know, say, in the police department was seven hundred thousand dollars, there's no way we could have supported that truly. I mean, thankfully, we had a bunch of money in there for our fourth officer that we didn't have to spend, and we had some other things that we were able to cut to make this right. But that's a difficult position, is we, we were way behind where we thought we were gonna be.
And between, and, and when you did raise the, the, the alarm that we were potentially going to be approaching a significant budgetary issue, uh, I've gotta give a lot of credit to Maria that we spent a lot of, a lot of time in the office curbing the spending before, um, and we can just be frank about it, before, you know, plans were floated to, uh, potential, uh, contract solution to, to our financial situation.
There's no doubt. I mean, we did cut it because, I, yeah, we didn't acquire the fourth officer that we really, we really needed. And I, I give you kudos. We, we cut that, and you understood where we were at and did that, and I, I'm totally appreciative of that.
So we have, we have moved to a spending budget at the police department this year that would be somewhat consistent, consistent with twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, and again, I'll touch on one more budget issue and then move on to contract service and maybe offer some clarity or perspective from, uh, the position of the Tenino Police Department. The revenue that is generated through the public safety sales dollars and the school resource dollars goes into the general fund. It's never realized in the police budget on a line item. So oftentimes, what occurs is, you know, the, the, the nature of the public safety sales dollars and the, the way it was written and what the voters were sold was it was going to be an increase in public safety and not to be used for surplanting. Um, so when we write our budget, we almost need somewhat of a, like a tax credit, a credit to say, okay, you've submitted a seven hundred thousand dollar budget or a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar budget. And it would be appropriate to say, okay, this is what the police department has submitted, but we need to take into account the fifty thousand dollars in revenue that were never realized in previous years that were brought in by a contract that Maria and I wrote and brokered. And the seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars that would never have been realized had it not been for the support of the voters of Thurston County. So again, that would bring the effective police budget down into the mid-fives to approaching six hundred thousand dollar range. So any more questions on the budget, and then we can get into some clarification on police contracting?
I, I just wanna bring up one thing that I can't, I, I just don't understand right now. I mean, Jessica, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take your cloud away from this one, but we just got a grant for five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the baseball fields. And I'm wondering why the mayor has your guys' grant just sitting there?
I don't want to know.
We don't have any. We're not taking questions yet. You can speak. You can speak during public comment if you want to, but I don't wanna get into that.
The chief just got done saying there's a grant on your desk.
There's no grant on the desk. It's a grant writer. It's like, go after grants. There's no grants on our desk.
My frustration would lie in that we have expended resources from the city, whether it be personnel resources, you know, brain power, in the pursuit of very important grants for the city. Things for our parks, things to, uh, that make this community what it is. And we've chosen to spend time pursuing grants of that nature. Um, I had made a proposal to have a grant writer brought in to seek those same types of grants for one of the most critical functions of the city, which is public safety. And that has not occurred yet. So I think the issue, if I may, Mr. Lawton, is that if we're expending resources to get grants for one issue, we ought to be expending resources to get grants for one of the core functions of a community, public safety, fire services, police services, basic city services, water, sewer, garbage, and lighting.
Exactly.
That'll happen.
And I agree, and, and I think the mayor just said that he's gonna get on it and get it, get it moving. So there we go, heading off in the right direction.
So I'd like to, I'd like to talk about a few things in the very rough draft of Thurston County and what a somewhat of an a la carte menu would be for police services.
And, and excuse me for interrupting, Chief. I, I had a budget question that I didn't get to with the, uh, the other questions there. The, uh, the savings that you had, is that, uh, gonna carry on? Are, are you reducing the expense of the, the budget going forward? Is this something that we?
Oh, that's a, that's a fantastic question. And yes, and I've got the answer, because I just gave it to a reporter. We have made, uh...
Well, they can just read about it then, right?
We, yeah, read about it tomorrow. So we, um, we significantly cut our training budget, and that makes probably a lot of the room want to gasp at first, but at the same time, we have uh, brokered a deal with Thurston County, and at no cost, we are in their in-service training, which is twelve months' worth of training, um, six to ten times a year. And it, uh, surpasses the state mandate in firearms, emergency vehicle operations, uh, crisis intervention, first aid, uh, what am I missing?
Legal.
Legal review.
Uh, legal review, prosecutor updates. So when, which, which this is a, which this is a great segue into what I was talking about. So the, the sheriff, uh, put into the packet that you all still have in front of you some, some items that would, I guess one would look at as a value-added, uh, line there. Uh, we're already getting the same training that the county is. There was mention of a SWAT team. Every agency in Thurston County, uh, gets the benefit of a SWAT team at no cost. Some contribute to the SWAT team by having a patrol officer participate. Uh, that's something that, that staffing allowed, we could also do. And participating in the SWAT team is no cost. But those are all, those are all services that we already have access to. The big one is the training and, um, inter-local agreements and support from our partner agencies. Uh, we always have access to the state patrol for critical, uh, traffic collisions. We always have access to our neighboring agencies to provide, provide assistance, and we always are assisting our neighboring agencies with particular skill sets that, that we have. Um, Sergeant Lee, he's an advanced school resource officer, and is very active in the county with all the other school resource officers. So, so some of the things, and I, I don't think it was done, uh, as a smoke and mirrors trick, but some of the things that are in that proposal are already things that we're doing at no cost, so it wouldn't be something in addition to what we're already doing. Um, I would like to talk about what a staffing model would look like with, uh, with options one and option two. I, I think it's very important to understand that, that currently, with our current slim staffing levels, which we function with, um, we have a uniformed officer, between one and three uniformed officers within the city limits, most days between zero-six-hundred hours and midnight. The staffing models proposed in options one and two by the sheriff's department, it's a very important detail that may be lost on some people, said a daytime officer. So you would have a day shifter working an eight or a ten-hour and forty-minute shift, split between Bukota and Tenino. And off at two-thirty to four-thirty, uh, the majority of our call volume or critical call volume is between four and midnight, which is when we have our staffing on. Maria and I work very, very hard at staffing the agency to the needs of the community. And with the models presented to you, the net result is going to be a decrease in police services in the city of Tenino. And having a decrease in services in the city of Tenino on the heels of a citizen-voted initiative to raise taxes, to increase public safety, I, I don't know how I can do the mental gymnastics to sell that proposal to the citizens that we're sworn to protect.
I don't drink enough.
So with that being said, there, there, there is, there is a, I, I, I'm skeptical about some of those numbers. I'm concerned at long-term planning and cost control. Uh, what happens when we get a different sheriff that doesn't have such a good relationship with us? The, the, the level of police service that the citizens of Tenino are accustomed to and deserve, it's going to be a different product. The, the officers here are the longest-tenured officers in both Maria and I's career with this city. And it's just going to be a different product. And I spoke to the sheriff about this before I presented. It's a very touchy topic, because I'm not trying to say that the, the product that the Thurston County Sheriff's Office will deliver when they are here, it's not a subpar product. It's just a different service than what the city of Tenino gets. And there's no way that you are gonna get the same amount of service for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And my concern with that is, and, um, Mr. Isel, uh, I can appreciate the dog whistle comment on defunding the police. Um, but the net result of this is a defunding of the Tenino Police Department. And I will agree with you that it is not for political purposes. I empathize with the mayor on the budgetary constraints that we are facing as a city. But the end result is the, 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 a, a lack of law enforcement in Tenino. And a lack of law enforcement, it's gonna be a decrease of four commissioned officers in all of southeast Thurston County. So the hundred and eleven calls for service that we responded to outside the city, sixty-seven of them priority, eleven of them priority one, won't be, that it'll be four less police officers in all of southeast Thurston County, also for our partner agencies, which we assisted in the capture of the murderer in Bukota. We're actually first on scene to set perimeter for that. So it will be a decrease in public safety.
Well, not to mention the Oregon Trail days and all the other celebrations that we have around.
And Ms. Godbeck, I, I, I'm fully confident that in the event that, that contract services would be provided, that, you know, with planning, you could figure out who to direct traffic, but I think it's also for the, for the council, the mayor, and the citizens in the room to describe what a lot of people think of, of, of contract policing is, uh, a King County model, where the King County Sheriff's Department will staff the city of Burian. And they're staffed in blue uniforms with Burian Police Department patches, Burian police cars. They have their own rank structure, their own accountability structure. And those officers that are King County employee deputies are in the city limits of Burian twenty-four seven, reporting to a Burian sergeant, a Burian captain, and a Burian chief. That is not the model of contract policing that Thurston County, um, is proposing. Their, their proposal, I mean, we get what we pay for, and it is up to the, to the mayor and the council and the... the council, and ultimately the citizens of this community, but it is a different product than what some may be envisioning in their head, if they are familiar with what King County and some other larger counties can enjoy.
I mean, this only benefits one, one department, and that's Thurston County. This benefits nobody else.
I've got concerns of long-term cost control. I really have concerns with what, what does this look like five or six years from now? And, and not to get, not to throw out a bunch of analogies here, but I can appreciate looking at data in the emergency services, and fire departments often do this, they'll carve out fire districts based off of call volume. We've had this many fires, this many medical calls in this area, we need to draw a boundary line around it, this is a fire district, it requires two engines, five aid units, that's what we're putting there. That model doesn't work for law enforcement, because you can never quantify what the presence of the police in an area has stopped from happening. But once we let the toothpaste out of the tube, we can't get it back in. And that's become evident all up and down the West Coast from two thousand and nineteen until present, that once the toothpaste's out of the tube, you can't get it back in there. And I can appreciate evaluating it from a strictly financial position, and the sheriff had referenced, this is a math problem to me. Well, this is not a math problem to me, okay? The citizens of this community are, are not a component in a math problem that we're doing. They deserve the highest quality of law enforcement protection that we can get them. And to simply look at it as a math problem, which works in the fire services, but you also don't have firefighters patrolling with hoses looking for fires. They get called out when they, they start, or you're called out when somebody gets injured. So it's a, it's a, it's a very slippery slope when you start comparing the two, because it is not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Well, I should've asked Sanders when he was here, but maybe you know the answer. How often is the SRO in Rainier? Do you know?
Certainly.
Yeah, school hours Monday through Friday.
Oh, he's there every day, Monday through Friday?
He's there every day, but he's up here every morning.
Minus vacation, sick call, training. It is a very enticing number. I don't think I can also do the mental gymnastics to say that it is not.
Well, I can say that it's not an enticing number. I've been through this a long time ago, when Tenino and Rainier were talking about working together, and Rainier wanted to be the lead agency, and you can see what happened with Rainier. Rainier is now working with the county, they have a lot less service than that area really needs. They're bigger than we are by a few hundred, a few hundred people, and I think landmass, they're larger, and they still don't have the service that they really need to have out there. It would be a sad day towards the end of my career as an elected official to say to everybody in this room, oh, this is a great deal, because it's not. All of a sudden, you start losing service. You call Thurston County, God bless every one of those guys for everything that they do here, but they're still far away most of the time from us. If they're out in Yelm, it's gonna take them a half an hour, forty-five minutes to get to, to get here, and that's if they're just waiting for a call, which is, which is not always happening. If you, if you watch what's going on, you're seeing that there's an increase in, in, in traffic accidents, in all kinds of different little things that affect individuals. I do not believe that this type of a contract would serve the citizens of Tenino.
And if I can add to that, Mr. O'Callaghan, if I were looking at this as a math problem, and a simply a financial analyst behind a desk in the county building was crunching numbers based off of population and comparing Rainier to Tenino, they're vastly different communities, and this is not a slight on Rainier. It's actually, I was a reserve officer there in the early two thousands, that's where I started my career. But the difference in the community of Rainier and the city of Tenino is huge. We have a downtown core, we have alleys, we have a city structure, we have parks, we have pools, we have four schools. So even if you were looking at this as a math problem, and, and I were working for the county, it's not a fair, it's not a fair estimate, because the city, this city requires much more than a bedroom-type community like Rainier, where it's, what, a couple of gas stations and a bunch of housing, essentially.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, too, because we haven't even touched the business side of it. I mean, Tenino's growing. We have the agricultural park that's gonna be opening up soon. We have businesses, business owners here that wanna speak out. I'm just afraid if this ever was, you know, defunded the police, that we would, we would just be a gas station town, like you just said.
I, I don't know why the, why anyone would think that decreasing any police services in any area is going to have a different result than what we've seen all up and down the I-five corridor and nationwide. I don't know why anybody thinks that that, and we talk about code enforcement, you know, that's something that, that Maria and I were trying to hatch a plan on how we're gonna address code enforcement. All of these quality-of-life issues, you know, one RV leads to two, which leads to ten, and then you've got Enson Road in Olympia, that's a code enforcement issue. We deal with, we deal with one tent when it gets set up here. We don't wait for their, wait for sixty tents, and then you have to have an entire squad come in and, and, and deal with it. I genuinely fear that those things will, if gone unchecked, will consume this community, and then the ripple result from that years down the road, I don't know how it could be anything else other than a financial impact to the city and to the people that live here. Judge Robert Taylor and Sir Robert Peel are some of the founding fathers of policing, and they have some pretty basic concepts, there's thirteen of them, but I'll go over one of them. And the effectiveness of a police department should never be measured by the apparent police activity, it should be measured by the lack of crime in an area, because you can never quantify what your presence prevented from happening. So, is there any other questions, Mr. Mayor, Council?
I've never had a question from our police departments.
Well, I think everybody here knows how I feel about it. Everybody, and probably everybody in the audience also, that we need our police department.
Oh, definitely.
And I don't think anyone argues with that. But getting back to the defunding, this isn't about defunding the police, it's about defunding the entire city. We're a million dollars short, and we're running out of money. We're gonna have to figure that out, and...
There's other ways.
And I'd, and I'd like to be a part of that solution.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely. But, but this is more than the police department. This is the entire city and everything we do, the water, the parks, the ag park, it's all affected by this million-dollar shortfall. So it's up to the mayor, it's his responsibility to consider every possibility, even the ones that we don't want, even the ones that we hope we don't have to do, and that's, that's what this is about. So be clear on that, the people who come here. The police department has all the city's support, including the city council, including the mayor, but it's one thing to say that the citizens deserve the best police force, and no one's gonna argue against that. It's another one to say, can the city afford the police force? We just don't have the money.
He just said they're twenty-nine percent under budget.
Great, we can use it to help make up the million dollars for the rest of the city. This is, my point is, we're not considering this as a single item, just the police department. The police department is one element of everything that we've gotta look at in this city.
So they're prioritized. It's the one that holds it all together.
We'll have public comment, please.
One of the things that are essential to sitting here is to understand what priorities are in a community. The money that you guys give us to run this city, our first priority has to be public safety. Plain and simple. Thank you.
And I disagree. Our first priority is to manage the money, because without the money, there is nothing, including public safety. And the money has not been managed, we've been bleeding money for years now, and now's where it comes to head. So it's up to us to consider all the, all the elements that we have to think about, all the services, all the people, everything that the city needs, including public safety.
Please, let him speak, you can speak later. Any other questions from the council? We'll open it up to public comments that we have signed up here.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members.
Thank you.
We have several people signed up, I'll just make comment first, people have three minutes to comment, and we are not going into back and forth, this is just a period, you can voice your opinion, and we'll record those, and they are much appreciated. The first person on the list is Laura Burgess from Lincoln Avenue.
Hi. Hello. So my question, Mayor, is, do you ever walk to the park at eight o'clock at night? Eight o'clock in the morning? You walk around town at all?
So it is only comment, not question period, so you're allowed to make a comment, but you cannot ask a question.
Oh, okay, so my, my comment is that with the police department that is here, that I see when I go to the park at seven AM, nine AM, ten AM, six o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night, they're present. I don't see a whole lot of crime here, I hear about some of it a little bit. To me, the issue that I think need dealt with is your code enforcement, because we have homeless people that are going to the bathroom and leaving toilet paper around, it's unsanitary, but yet you're charging me an awful lot of money for me to go to the bathroom and my toilet, but these people get to do it for free, and it's hazardous to the public, it's hazardous to our water, and it's hazardous to our plants and our children. So, don't try to break what's already unbroken. We need the police. This is how we stay together as a community, and they have our backs. And if you don't think so, feel free to move out. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Lord.
Who's next on the list, sir? Does he have it, can you?
Gary Nutter. Sorry, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, thank you guys, I know this has been rough all the way. I think there's a few components that I'd like to comment about. First and foremost, I think the biggest differentiator that we're gonna see, if you guys look to pull funding and, and move it over to the county side of things, is the difference between responding to calls versus deterring the call altogether. The county, when he came in, Sheriff Sanders, great guy, the biggest thing that I can speak to personally is, I've never in my life, since I've been here five years old, remember seeing a sheriff drive down Central Avenue, because they're not, they're not patrolmen, they're, they're county response team, you know, that's why they get the funding for SWAT teams, that's why they get the funding for, for all that extracurricular law enforcement stuff. It's the officers here today that are part of their community, that are responding not to just calls, but deterring opportunities, working with their local community. And the reality is, is it's, you know, this isn't any of what I would assume your guys' fault, but it's definitely your problem. You mentioned the budget, I get it, there's a huge problem there. How many of you been on the council that could've been addressing this a lot longer, for a long time now? Everybody can push and point fingers and lay blame, but the reality is, is this is a, we put you guys in here to help keep this city comfortable, so let's do it. And public safety has to be our first priority. To say that the numbers don't make a difference, or the numbers have to be the priority, the numbers don't exist if we don't have a city that feels safe and, and, you know, capable to handle its own endeavors. So, let's see, the only, I wrote a bunch of shit down here.
You know, this is being recorded, you know.
Oh, sweet.
We'll make sure we put that up.
Yeah, put that one on some blooper somewhere. Anyhow, I really appreciate it, I love this city, I've been a part of it my whole life, and, you know, I don't have any answers, I don't have all the answers. I think collectively, the group up here can, can get to it. Defunding the police, I do believe that is just a political ploy, we're in a position where right now's the time, so I don't think that's really the issue, I think it's just a matter of, let's get on this grant, let's get this stuff going, let's make good choices, and whatever the case may be that got us into this situation, deal with that, but let's focus on where we're at today and make, make progress for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gavin Strong, still here?
Hello? All right, I'm gonna keep this real short, because I'm pretty sure everybody wants to get home.
Name an address.
Name an address. My, oh, I'm pretty sure, I already did this.
I'll just say, I got it here, Gavin Strong, sixteen, three, seven-three-one, Lima Acres.
Yes, okay, okay, well, anyway, whenever my, whenever I lived here about twelve years ago, my father was the mayor, Eric G. Strong, and the first thing that he did was work on the police department, whenever he became mayor, and he did, because whenever I was living on Houston Street, there used to be speeders all the time, and then we had the miles per hour worked on, and he would always try to get a sheriff or somebody to come over and patrol next to our road, because I just had my little brother. And there was no fence on that road, and people were just speeding by fifty-five miles an hour. No one ever did anything. He became mayor, and then people started watching our road and slowing down. I don't see why we can't keep the same attitude with the chief and our police department as it is. I know it's, I know it's tough. I hear you, man. I know it's gonna be tough, but we just gotta stick it through for our community. I was born in St. Peters, I was brought home from the hospital on Strong Lane off Military Road. My family's been here for decades, and this is where I wanna be. I feel safe, because I have five kids at home, and not all of them are mine, okay? You're looking at me now, they're not all mine. I had to say that, okay? I, myself, only have one on the way. And just because of all that, they, they come through town all the time. My little brother, I have full custody of him. He is always coming to the park after school, and sometimes I'll see Officer Johnson, I'll see other people around there. I feel safe, knowing that my kid's not gonna get taken like Nancy Moyer, or, what is it, Oakley?
Yeah.
I feel safer with the people we got now, and I would rather not lose them to the county. All right, that's all I got. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Davina Sanchez, three-eight-two Briar Lane. Come on up.
Looks like a book.
I'm gonna try and stick with the script. Good evening, my name is Davina Sanchez, and I live on three-eight-two Briar Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here because I believe deeply in the importance of keeping our police department fully funded, and I wanna share some personal experience that highlight why this decision matters so much to our community. I'm gonna try not to get emotional. During Oregon Trail Days, there was an incident, and our police chief was the first person on the scene. He directed traffic and handled the situation with calm and professionalism. That presence made all the difference in preventing further chaos. It's moments like this that remind us how essential our police department is, not just handling crime, but also maintaining order and safety in situations that could easily spiral out of control. On a more personal note, my five-year-old son, who goes to Parkside Elementary, can walk into school every day with confidence, because Officer Johnson is always there at the door, and he knows that someone is watching over him and keeping him safe. As a parent, that is gold. And then, it's not just only my family that feels this way. Kids on my street love seeing the officers when they patrol. One family told me, one of the reasons why they bought a house on our street was because of the frequent police presence. They feel safe, knowing that their children can ride their bikes and play outside without ca... constant worry about danger lurking around the corner. But I need to tell you something even more personal, I was a victim of a school shooting at North Thurston in twenty fifteen, I am incredibly grateful that our resource officer was there that day, thanks to his quick actions, no one was physically harmed, but as I stand here today, I can't help but think what might've happened if he hadn't been there, or if response times were slower because of budget cuts. That thought truly makes me sick to my stomach. We are not just talking about dollars and cents here, we are talking about lives, our children's lives, our neighbors' lives, our own lives. Cutting funding to our police department might seem like an easy way to save money in short term, but long-term risks are far too great. Fewer officers mean fewer, a slower response time, slower response time means lives can be lost, tragedies can escalate, and our sense of safety can disappear. When it's time to make budget cuts, I understand sometimes it's necessary, unfortunately, public safety should not be the last thing that we look into touching, especially for our community. Any changes must be carefully evaluated, it is poor leadership to claim a crisis without collaborating with your staff and council to find thoughtful solutions, and I think it's very clear, that is what's going on, because you had a grant on your desk, but nobody was aware of that. We all have heard stories about how in places like Bucot and Rochester, criminals listen to the scanner and plan their activities based on when the districts or area patrol duty is called out to on that area in the North County. Anyways, long story short, we need to keep our police department funded, not for just today, but for the future of Tonino.
Thea Brock, one, two, three, two, Park Avenue, still here? She gone? Serena Peter, I think she left too?
She's gone.
Kim Johnson, one, thirty-nine, Richmond?
Hello, all right, so I had no intention of doing this, but I'm gonna. My address on there says Richmond Street, that's not where I physically live, so I have boots-on-the-ground information for you. I was forced to rent in Rainier because I couldn't find a house here. My family lives here, I work here, my daughter goes to school here, this is my community. I wanna tell you a story, Labor Day weekend on a Monday, Rainier didn't have any police there. There was my, uh, I was at work here at the gas station in Tonino, where I've had to call the police several times, they show up in minutes, whether it's a creepy guy trying to get a girl to smoke weed in his car, or an accident in front of the, in front of the store, sorry, they're there. I was at work, my security cameras went off, my daughter's home alone in Rainier, there's a man in my, in my yard, I call 911 on my way to Rainier, call 911, I'm screaming, somebody's in my yard, my daughter's alone, she starts asking me questions, I scream, "Get there", I hang up, that's what they know, is that my daughter's alone and someone's in my yard. I call my son, my son gets there, there's a physical altercation, someone kicked out of my driveway, and thirty-seven minutes later, Thurston County Sheriff showed up. Not here, don't do that to us.
Thank you. I'm having a little trouble with this one, so excuse me, I can't read the writing of some PO box four, nine, two, was the, I can't read the.
That's actually Johnson.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Just real quick, I, I, to get to your point about the, I think Bobby said that, uh, they don't bring money, they can't earn money to help with the budget, but they do in other ways as far as the business. Uh, you know, we have thirty-five events a year out there that sometimes have a thousand to two thousand people, and their biggest, you know, compliment is they don't have to worry about crime out there. You know, the, the police department here does a great job, they interact with our contestants, you know, they support it, they eat food with the vendors, and it's just a huge deal to have that support for all the businesses, you know, which brings money, so, I want you to consider that side of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
The last one I have on the list here is Joyce Swirel, two, four, two, two, four, Sussex.
Mr. Mayor and council persons, um, I own the Ironworks Boutique down the street, so I'm a business owner, I do not live here, but I think I live here most of the time.
Her husband thinks she live here.
So, um, um, Jeff, you said that you didn't think this was a political thing at all, I don't think it's a political thing at all, but I want, but you weren't at the, uh, the forum that we had for the politicians that were running, and, uh, Mr. Waterson was at that meeting, and the chief and I sat back in the back of the, the, um, meeting, and we both wanted to know what his views were on keeping the police, because we both knew, because we live, I, I don't live here, but I live here, uh, that, that the general feeling was that our mayor did not want to keep the police, and that was before he was elected mayor. So, um, that question was asked to him, and he did say that, um, I don't, I, he, uh, said that he would keep the police, or however he said it, I don't know, but my point to you, Mayor, is that the public view at that particular time was that you didn't wanna keep the police at that time, and you weren't even mayor. So, when I heard, uh, through a couple of sources, that the police department had been trying to write a grant, get a grant writer to come in and do something about writing a grant, and you wouldn't have anything to do with it, I thought, well, typical, then, that you didn't want anything to do with the police, to have them funded or anything. I want the public to know that, Jeff, I want you to know that, because I don't think it is a political thing, I think it's a personal thing, and, and, um, I could tell you, over the fifteen years of owning my business here in Tonino, and working here in Tonino before that, the many, many, many times that we've had, that we've dealt with our local police, and how they have been right there when we needed them. Um, it, it's, uh, when you own a business, and somebody has climbed over the fence in your back garden area, and you unlock the back door, and go back up to your, um, computer, and the back door opens, and this scroungy-looking guy comes through, and you're thinking, what, how, how did he get past me in the front door, and, no, he slept in the garden that night? And I, I said, well, what's this?
Three minutes, you can wrap it up.
Okay. Anyhow, the police were there in no time at all after I called them and took care of that person, and I'm grateful for the police, and, and Mr. Waterson, I appreciate you as a mayor, but I really think you need to think of grants and how, other ways of doing something and keeping our police force here. We're a city, not a little burg, we're a big city.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have on the list, uh, is there any, I'll open it up, just the last, if anybody wants to speak, this is the last, uh, even though you're not signed up. I, I would truly say I appreciate everybody's comments, I told people when I started here, I make bad decisions, I wanna hear about it, and I will look at those and, and, and make changes if it needs to be, so I appreciate what's been said. We, as a council, will take, take those into consideration, it's up to the council to develop budgets, uh, I can make recommendations, but they pass them, so I'm sure everybody here will take the comments that have been heard and into consideration, and hopefully we get to the right place at the end of the day, so, thank you, everybody, for being here, I, I truly appreciate it.
There is another public comment at the end of the meeting too, if you guys wanna, if nobody signed up and wants to sign up, or just get up there and speak, they can.
Okay, I know, seeing nobody else coming up, we're gonna get to new business, we do have a few things, most of them are not too difficult. Uh, the first one is equipment transfer acceptance for Tonino Police Department, some time ago, we accepted a bunch of equipment from, uh... Okay, we gotta keep busy, so if you wanna talk, can you go outside, please?
You hit your gamble.
Yeah, meeting's not over.
We gotta keep going.
What is this equipment?
I'll tell you. Can we take conversations outside, please, so we can keep going?
Yeah, that's what you gotta gamble.
Okay, here we go. Uh, we got several things, the equipment transfer, this happened some time ago, uh, I'm trying to look, in twenty twenty-one, actually, so this is a couple of years ago, when we were donating equipment, we technically are supposed to accept that, this never, this got missed, so we have a list of equipment that you could all see that was, uh, from Capcom that we need to accept.
Oh, TCOM.
Yeah?
Yeah, I second.
Moved and seconded, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, let me get back to my agenda here, where is it? To accept the equipment transfer from TCOM, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Second one is the VFW agreement, uh, for the Veterans Monument, this has been on our agenda for some time, we made a cut, one minor adjustment to this from our attorney, uh, everything seems to be good, uh, so we're bringing this forward for consideration, uh, agreement with the VFW for the Veterans Monument.
No approval.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the agreement between the city of Tonino and VFW post fifty-eight seventy-eight, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The third one is the wastewater treatment plant, uh, influent screen amendment, we talked briefly about this, uh, we need to replace those screens, but we have to get some engineering work done before we can go for emergency funding, so this agreement is, uh, for that, and, uh, that will come out of the surfund, it will not be coming out of our general fund.
No approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the wastewater treatment plant influent screen amendment, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hope I got these out of order now. Pass, that motion passes, EV charging station agreement, we got a grant for the EV charging station out at the, the, uh, event center, uh, as part of that, uh, Mike, our, our engineering services are gonna basically manage the installation and everything, so this agreement is basically, uh, for the fees for managing that whole process and doing the bidding and all that kinda stuff and installation oversight, uh, what this one is about.
No approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to approve the EV charging station amendment, is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Just a second, Dave. Just so everybody knows, it seems like we're moving really fast, but we've been talking about this stuff for months and months and months.
And we get, we get our information off the computer and go through it before we ever come to the meeting, so.
Pardon me?
Unfamed Business?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and seconded, I believe, uh, is there no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, Ag Park change order for HVAC, we have another change order on the table, and we have Mike Marshall here.
Uh, we did for over two hours, but he's now gone, so, um, he said to let you guys know, this is the last change order, it is due to energy code new requirements that have changed, um, it is for a variable speed controller, a supply fan, for, um, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, including tax, um, and we also do have a credit with another contractor, with J.A. Morris, of twenty-six thousand dollars, so it will offset the cost of that, just through someone else.
Thanks, Jen. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the change order for the HVAC on the Ag Park, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes. The next one is, uh, amendment for bathhouse, bathhouse archaeological and historical building investigation, a lot of words. So, we're looking at, uh, improving the bathhouse over there by the park, and as part of that, we have to, of course, everything we do now has to have an archeological study before we can get anything done, so, uh, once again, to get moving forward with that and any grant possibilities, we have to get that archaeological study done, so that's what this is.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amend, amendment for the bathhouse, uh, ar- archaeological study, is there any discussion?
Well, I could get on the soapbox, but I won't this time.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, this one was kind of a late addition, so I, a little bit of explanation, we know we're in a bad spot with our budget, I'm new to this, Jen's new to this, we got some serious issues, as we can heard from the public, on about how we balance our budget and maintain services. I found somebody that's willing to come in and help us, she is a budget and fiscal analyst specialist, uh, she's worked at several places, uh, or actually worked for the county for some time, uh, she's willing to come in and help us to, that's what she does, she looks at budgets and helps, helps guide us to how we get through this deficit, because this is gonna be a multi-year project that we need to do, and that's her specialty. So, I've asked her if she would come in and help us, it's gonna cost us, uh, my proposal is, I will give up my mayor's stipend to pay for this, it would be a maximum of eighteen thousand dollars, that's what I get in the next year, I will give up my stipend, uh, will have a contract for her to provide services up to eighteen thousand dollars. I didn't have time to get the budget, uh, get this agreement done, because this kinda came on quickly, uh, so I'm asking the council if we can get the legal part of it done through our lawyer and approved, if we can, you can give me authorization to sign this, this, this is critical, we need to get moving on this, because we have to get our budget approved by the end of this year, so what we do now is critical, what we do today and moving forward, so I'm asking if you would allow me to have that leeway to get that done and...
Maybe so.
Mayor, I appreciate the gesture, in, in, with the million, million-dollar deficit, eighteen dol, eighteen thousand dollars over the next year, you, you're doing the job you need to be compensated for.
To me, it's the right thing to do, I mean, I didn't do this for the money.
I just don't know that, I, I, is, is it legal, can you legally do that?
Well, John used to give his, I don't know, he's still does, he used to not take his compensation, I don't know.
Once you, once, I can't remember why I ended up, oh, because I came back on council and that was part of the deal, uh, you might wanna look into that, but if you can.
I did it for four years.
Yeah, I, there's gotta be a way, even if I get the money and I give it back to the city as a donation, I mean, one way or another, I can get it back to them, but... Anyway, that's what I'd prefer to do, I, I, I swear, I didn't get into this for the money, and I know we're in a bad situation, and...
Can we see her credentials too?
Huh?
Can we see her credentials too?
Yeah, she's gonna...
I've, I've never heard of her before, so...
Yeah, uh, she's gonna come to the next meeting, if, I, I've told her I wanted to make sure we could move forward before I, she came in, but, uh, she has plans to come to the next meeting and, and introduce herself and kinda tell you what she's done, and if that's okay.
Yeah.
So, it's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion?
Question come from the crowd or...
Uh, we're not supposed to, yeah?
I get approval.
Yeah, you can do, make a comment at the end if you'd like to, uh, is there any other discussion?
It, it's your choice to give up the, your, your salary.
I'm willing to do that.
I disagree with that, you know, you're, you're here getting the job done, and this is the toughest spot.
I do too, I disagree with it too, yeah.
Toughest spot the city's been in for a long time, we, and you're here doing the effort and, and getting this lined up, so I, I prefer you keep it, but it's, in the end, it's your choice, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much, I know that's...
I thought you seconded that one.
Did, who's?
Did someone second that?
I thought, I heard Elaine say second, but...
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought there was a second, I appreciate that one, I know that was last minute, so, I appreciate it. Built, last one is booked, two more, building services agreement, do we have, uh, agreement for our...
Just real quick, is this being funded out of fees or is this being funded out of the general fund?
Fees. It's all fees, just like we did. There's no cost to the city, everything that comes with fees.
No approval.
And I spoke with the building official of City of Olympia and he recommended this, in fact, he trained, this gentleman trained, uh, the Olympia guy, so I, I think it's a good choice.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement for Building Inspection Services.
Was he hired with us, I'm sorry, before?
Yeah.
Has he been with us before?
Yes, I think he was. Jen, he was, yeah.
Yep, before we hired Rainey, or when we first hired Rainey, he was...
What was the reason that he had, that he left? Was there a reason he left?
Um, he was, his services were terminated with us due to previous administration's decision.
I, I did ask about that and I didn't hear any service problems when he was here, but, so I don't know what the disagreement was between them, but, uh, I didn't hear that there was a service-related issue. So it's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. The last one is budget resolution that Linda asked.
I have a resolution, um, of the City Council of Tonino, Washington stating that no budget proposal from Mayor Waterson will be accepted if it reduces funding for the Tonino Police Department below 2024 levels. Whereas the City Council of Tonino is committed to ensuring safety and well-being of its residents and whereas the Tonino Police Department plays a vital role in maintaining public SERP safety and community trust and whereas adequate funding for the Tonino Police Department is essential to support its operations and personnel and community engagement efforts. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Tonino, Washington, that the council will not accept any proposed budget from Mayor Waterson that reduces funding for the Tonino Police Department below the 2024 funding levels. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon this passage.
No approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I think it's premature. We are so-so at the early and as, you know, and, and to get that million dollars down, you know, there's, there's two ways to do it, three ways. You can reduce, uh, expenses, you can raise revenue or combination of the both. And I get, we get, that Tonino is supportive of, of the police department, they don't want changes in the service and that's great, but in the end, we're a million dollars short and, and we still don't know how we're going to do that.
I think we need to look into avenues of, of raising more revenue is what we need to do.
Exactly. So let's look at that before we pass resolutions, limiting our options, please.
I don't think this is limiting our option and after hearing the citizens and, you know, the chief being up here telling us how he's under budget and everything, there's, there's other ways we can, we can go about this.
And what are those ways, sir?
We'll just have, we'll get together and look at those, Jeff. Why don't, why don't you get up here and tell us too, your ideas?
Well, how are we going to do this? What are we going to cut? We can't cut water service?
We're not saying cutting, we're saying raising revenues, we're saying find ways to bring more money into the city instead of cutting things.
Oh, that, okay, uh, we can raise, uh, property taxes, right? 1%, 3% with a levy? Have we done the numbers on that yet? How much will they get us? You know, if we raise...
Mr. Mayor, we're going way, way astray.
What's that, excuse me?
We're going way astray.
Yes.
I, I'll make a comment. Uh, I'm still not, I think, uh, saying we have to adopt the 2024 level is hard for me because our 2024 level was 700 and something thousand dollars, it was based on a budget that wasn't real. I mean, I could say we base it on what we spent this year would be more, seem more reasonable to me than saying we're going to base it on a level that was just unrealistic and totally, and we, as the chief said, they've cut, they've not had to use all that money. So I would, I would say it's dangerous to say we need to put it at the 2024 level that, I would say, put it at what we're spent this year, what we actually spent versus the 2024 level. This is my personal...
It's been proven that, that the police department, the chief and Maria can find ways to not spend the, the whole thing.
We know that, that means we can't...
Even though, even, all right.
Go ahead.
Even though it's the 2024 level, they've proven that they don't spend the whole thing anyway.
But if we allot that money, we can't allot it to anything else. I mean, so, it's up to you though, I mean, that's, that makes it easy because we know that's what it's going to be. It kind of takes a lot of the, the guesswork out of how to, how to balance our budget.
That makes a, a good, good point. If, if the police don't need all the money that they're getting for 2024 budget, why are, and, and we still need to make up the million dollars somewhere else, why do we give them the money that they don't need? Again, until we have a solution and come up with a solution on how we're going to solve this problem, it's, it's too early to limit ourselves.
I stand by, I stand by the resolution.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other, is there, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay, I think that's all we have, now we'll get back to, do you want to do reports tonight or you just want to wait? Just, I don't think there's anything...
We have people here that came to do reports.
Yeah, we've got people here that came to do them.
TRPC and T and TPB will meet next month. That's my report.
Well, and that, Chief, are you wanting to give another report?
But Rainey, Rainey...
Rainey's got a report and Linda's got a report.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking down. Linda, do you want to do your library report? Sorry to keep you here so long.
That's okay. I'll be right. She touched, she went like this to me.
Yes, tiny, tiny report. Linda McKinney, um, library manager for the Tonino Timberland Library and, um, I had promised a couple of months ago, I don't even know how long ago, that periodically I would give you some numbers about what the library was doing and that is what this is. And all I want to do, you guys can read it and I'll give... But what I did want to call your attention to and everybody's, who is here, the attention to is that we, once again, we'll be providing voter assistance services at the library. It starts October 28th and Monday through Friday from 10 to 4:00. And then the following week is election week, Monday 10 to 4:00 and election day 8 to 8:00. So we can help people register to vote, if they have an issue that they haven't been able to, to resolve, we will help them get it resolved. We can help print replacement ballots and we will have a ballot drop box, um, by election day, probably we'll get it several days before that. So we're here to help in that way as well and so, um, wanted to make people aware of that and I'm happy to be back and next time we'll talk a little bit more about library stuff.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome, you look like you're doing quite well.
Yes. I, I am, it's, um, it's a process, but I, I'm pleased with where I am so far, so thank you.
Linda had her knees replaced.
Just one.
Linda, feel, feel free to use these ramps too when you leave.
Thank you.
Rainey, do you have a report?
Well, members, Mr. Mayor, a final report to present, uh, to your, uh, Building Department permits issued for 2024. 68 permits issued out, 68 to 46 to finalize and close, just been working on, just to find, uh, two and a few of those.
Excuse me. Um, hopefully we'll get those resolved prior to my, to my tenure of leaving. Uh, 22 permits to remain open pending application, notification, Building Department requesting inspection. Uh, we just, we have received two new residential structures, uh, which are in review at the City Planner's Office pending site plan approval. Uh, Code Enforcement opened up 14 cases within the City of Tonino and a total of 22 cases within the City of Rainier. All these cases have been closed to this date. Uh, so we'll be leaving Rainier and the City of Tonino with those off the table. Um, at this time, if I could, I would like to, uh, take this time, thank the City of Tonino for the opportunity to serve the community for the past three years as the building official and code enforcement officer. I'm thankful for the community outreach and support that I have received during my employment with the City of Tonino. I'm also thankful for the support of the City Tonino, excuse me, for the support of the Tonino Police Chief Robert Autora and his officers, as well as Maria Rodriguez. The professionalism and dedication to the community is overwhelming. In closing, I'd like to ask council to consider the ramifications of what it would mean for the community to lose such a professional organization that the chief Autora has put together for the City of Tonino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Rainey.
You're welcome, thank you.
Jessica, did you have anything you wanted to report on? Chief, did you have any last thing? Okay, I think, uh, it's 9:30. Any other reports? I don't have anything that's going to be, make a difference, so Jim, do you have anything you wanted to... Okay, uh, public comment period two, anybody else is welcome to come up and give a three-minute presentation if they wish to.
Well, I don't need three minutes, but I will say, um, kind of just going back to accountability, um, first of all, Mr. Waterson, as a neighbor and as, and knowing you as, as my neighbor, um, I don't believe personally that you have any interest in a defunding of the police. Um, uh, I think that, you know, you showed a, a passion in public safety yourself for a long time, so, um, I want to just comment that. Additionally, I wanted to thank all you guys, um, for just such a, you know, thankless position, so, it's a hard position to be in and, uh, um, I commend you all for being up there and being, being, uh, willing to battle it out with each other, so...
I appreciate it very much.
And, uh, keeping our interests in, in mind is, is top priority, so, thank you again.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, yeah.
I'm just applying, that's what you're coming up for, sorry.
No, actually, no, no planning commission report tonight. Adam Carney, uh, 558 Houston Street. So, um, really loved hearing from, um, everybody else tonight, um, and one of the thoughts that I had, um, sitting back in the audience was a lot of talk about grants. Um, grants by their very nature are competitive and as such, oftentimes they're one-time funds that we get. So, um, going forward, I hope that that's taken into account while, while budgets are being planned. Um, and I, I just hope that, you know, everybody that is, that is having to consider their, their budgets, um, the police department, the city, um, water sewer, everything, uh, greater communication, I think, is what's, what's required right now and just making sure that, you know, everybody's talking about, hey, these, you know, these grants are available and let's go after that and let's find somebody who can write these grants and, and all of that. I would just really encourage everybody to really dig into that right now and, you know, make sure that, that we do the absolute best that we can, um, for the city and, and for all of those people that live here, so, um, anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Last call. Seeing no other people standing up, is there any announcements? No announcements, the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They drew me there. Um, I do have a quick report, if I may. Um, the VBAT group met and coming up this Saturday on the 26th, we've got two things going on in Tonino. Um, at the police department, we have the Tonino Medicine Take Back. So this is a chance for, for residents who have those old pills in the cabinet or whatever and, uh, get them out of the house, get them away from the kids, the grandkids, whatever. The police department are, the police department is, uh, collecting those and that's, again, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Tonino Police Department. Second thing, also on Saturday, is the PTSA trunk or treat at the Tonino Middle School from 5:00 to 7:00. Um, good time to be had by all, so, uh, something for the kids to do and, uh, and yourselves if you're looking for something to do on, on Saturday night. Um, that is, uh, the reports I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Nothing else? Okay.